Said it's a rocky road to home. Said it's a rocky road to home. So don't forget your shoes when you leave your home. And when we get to where we're going, and when we get to where we're going. If the times turn bad, then all you've got to do is roll. And if you do, forget your shoes. You better watch your step on the rocky road to home. Said if you do, forget your shoes. You better watch your step on the rocky road to home. Said if you do, forget your shoes. Well, girl, you better get up in the morning when the clock goes on around 12. Wake up, start a new day. You gotta brush your hair and change what you wear for a while. Because if you don't, you'll get stuck, stuck in the same old rut. And that is not good, so I will do my best to tell you how to get yourself right out of that ditch. You gotta make a big escape. I said skip a doppa, skip a da da bop, rap a bop a doo. Said all the times that I tried to get to know you, girl, come on. I said skip a doppa, skip a da da bop, rap a bop a doo. And take another step through the door into space. And breathe another breath into your face and taste the sugar on the wind. And I will do my best to tell you how to get yourself right out of that ditch. You gotta make a big escape. I said skip a doppa, skip a da da bop, rap a bop a doo. I said all the times that I tried to get to know you, girl, come on. I said skip a doppa, skip a da da bop, rap a bop a doo. Well, girl, you better get up, get up off the couch and make some food so you can eat. Wake up, motivation is the key to finding the happier side of this situation. Rewind and think about all that you've missed. You better change your ways and I will do my best to tell you how to get yourself right out of that ditch. You gotta make a big escape. I said skip a doppa, skip a da da bop, rap a bop a doo. I said all the times that I tried to get to know you, girl, come on. I said skip a doppa, skip a da da bop, rap a bop a doo.
Amanda, ciérrale, ciérrale! ¿Por qué no cierras la llave? Nomás vas alborotando al marido de tu comadre. Y a la señora del veinte, nomás se pasa quejando que su querido marido, un hombre, va pregonando. Amanda, ciérrale! Amanda, ciérrale, Amanda, ciérrale, Amanda, ciérrale, 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 ciérrale.
The Board of Supervisors' June 28th meeting is now in session. We'll go to the clerk for roll call, please.
Supervisor Brown.
Here.
Supervisor McCowen.
Here.
Supervisor Pinches.
Here.
Supervisor Hamburg.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. And we'll go to our chair for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, omnipotent, eternal.
So the chair would like to announce that on the agenda for today, the Water Agency item, which is item number 9A, will be polled and will come forward at a future time. We'll now go to public expression and then we will be adjourning to closed session and then we will continue with the rest of our timed items for this morning. So we will not have the Notice Public Hearing, item number 9A, today. Yes, to the clerk.
I believe the agenda actually indicated that public expression will be after closed session.
Yeah, but I think we're gonna probably take it, take it ahead. Yeah. So we will now go to, we'll go to public comment. Please come forward and state your name with a salmon-colored sheet, bring it forward to the clerk. Anyone wishing to address the board for items not on the agenda, please do so at this time.
Are you gonna do the 10-minute?
Yes, please come forward, state your name.
Hi, I'm Pam Partee. I'm an SEIU negotiator. I'm a social worker for HHSA. I just now gave you a packet of our complete proposal, the SEIU proposal that you have before you today for your vote. We are here, as you see a sea of blue, in support and asking for your vote on this proposal. We wanted you to know that we all are here in support of our agreement. It's great news for us to have a, to have potentially reached an agreement cooperatively. We've worked very hard on this. We've worked for months on it. It's been a terrific amount of work on our part. We feel it's a just and fair proposal. We are all interested and engaged in this process and everyone is curious about how you will move forward today. That's why we're here. This is a good agreement and 96% of us voted yes to approve it. You have very good faith behind you, there's good spirit in the workplace, this is a good time to vote yes on this and get through the whole budget thing that we've been through the whole year. It's been difficult for all of us. Everyone here, I know all of you, I've seen you in the board, I know CEO Angelo, it's been a very difficult year for this county. It's time to move forward. We're here because we want you to move forward. Okay, so I believe I'm here to say yes from all of us? I thank you, I thank every one of you.
Good, thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the board under public comment for items not on the agenda? Okay, seeing that there is no one else coming forward, the board will adjourn to closed session, returning to report out of closed session, and then continuing with the morning's business. Sheriff, did you wish to come forward at this time?
Madam Chair, thank you. It's somewhat on the agenda, but not everything. As you know, as we all know, the state budget is a moving target right now. And last night, the governor approved a budget which is going to the Democrats today, the Democrat caucus, which is going to replace the booking fees, which is on a timed agenda item today. I would ask this board to either adopt the ordinance you're going to, you're looking at, on the condition that the budget is not signed, or put this off for your next board meeting, which I know is in July, but it looks like the money for AB 109 realignment, the state prisoners coming to county jail, funding is going to be there as well as the VLF money, or whatever they're gonna call it. They're not gonna call it VLF, they're gonna call it who knows what. But it's going to be the same amount of money. So I just wanted to update you and ask you, is it still gonna be on the agenda today?
I believe it is, Sheriff. Will you be able to be here later on in the morning?
I will.
When the item comes forward?
Right.
Then we can have all of those points that you've raised as part of the discussion.
Right, thank you very much.
Certainly, thank you. Okay, the board will now adjourn to closed session, returning to report out as soon as we conclude. The Board of Supervisors is back in session and I'll go to council to report out from closed session.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With respect to labor negotiations, the board took no action other than to provide direction to staff.
Thank you. We will move forward and there's another chance for public comment, but first, the board would like to announce that the item number 9A has been removed from the calendar for today and we will reschedule that item. This is item number 9A, Water Agency item. So we'll go now to public expression for items not on the agenda. Please fill out a form at the back of the room, bring it forward to the clerk, and I will call your name and you'll have three minutes. Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward with our next item. This is item number 5C. The CEO is the sponsor, so I will go to Ms. Angelo.
Good morning, Madam Chair. I am, Ms. Furman is not here today for this item. Tammy Waselski will be addressing this item for the executive office. And this is the booking fees for the sheriff's office.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Would you announce again that the Water Agency item's been pulled? I think this was...
Yes, I did, I did just announce that.
Earlier, but again.
No, I did again.
Okay.
But I will again.
Okay.
For the third time. Item number 9A has been removed from the calendar for today. It will be rescheduled. This is item number 9A. So we're moving forward now...
Well, and that was the Water Agency proposed fee increases.
Yes, I did state that earlier, Water Agency item, yes.
Madam Chair, before this item has started, I just wanted to comment that we are moving forward with the booking fees. I believe that the sheriff does have some additional information. However, because of a timeframe that this has to be read and approved by July 1, so I think from there, I'll turn it over to Tammy and the sheriff.
Would you give a little more detail on that and why, the timeliness of the item?
Okay.
Yes. Okay, Chair Smith and the board members. At this time, the local government public safety subvention, the vehicle license fee, is still scheduled to sunset on June 30th. And this is resulting in estimated 1.2 million loss in funding from Indocino County. And at this point, a number of counties have adopted the fees or in the process of analyzing the reinstatement of the fees to offset the loss of funding. And at this, we have a government code section that allows us to reinstate the local booking fees when no provision for replacement is enacted by the state legislature. And pursuant to that, we actually would have to adopt a fee prior to the beginning of the fiscal year and have, make sure it's properly noticed. So it means we would have to adopt it by June 30th for us to enact it, or we'd have to wait a year.
Good, thank you very much. So the chair will now open the public hearing. I'll go first to the clerk to establish proper notice.
Proper notice has been established.
And to the clerk again to note any correspondence or telephone calls received.
All correspondence received has been distributed.
Great, thank you. So we will first have a staff presentation to cover a summary of the staff report that the board has in the published packet. Then we will go to public input and public comment. Those wishing to speak will fill out a speaker form, bring it forward to the clerk, and you will have three minutes to address the board on the topic. Staff will then present final remarks on the item. Then the board will be able to continue questions to staff or to the public. The public hearing will be closed, the matter will then be before the Board of Supervisors for a decision. So we'll begin with the staff presentation.
Okay, well, the board members have received the packet that has the information that we, I've just summarized. And what I wanted to just bring to the attention is that, right now, the county estimates that there would be about 2,380 annual billable bookings. And we can only charge based on code, half of what the administrative fee is associated with that, and that's where we've come up with $41.05 for each booking. The projected annual revenue would be $97,699. And that is also outlined in what was provided to you with the backup material. And at this point, Sheriff Almond is available for comments and any questions that we have regarding those figures.
Good, so we'll go to the sheriff.
Good morning, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Booking fees are very clearly a double-edged sword. While some people may say, well, this is an answer to a financial situation we have, public safety on the other side is not improved by booking fees. And I've never been a total advocate of booking fees because there's situations where local police officers may choose to not book a person into our jail and issue a citation to avoid the booking fees, where in fact, this person needs to be booked into county jail for the preservation of the peacekeeping mission that we have. And I'll use drunk drivers, for example. When we had drunk drivers, when we had booking fees in the past, some drunk drivers were issued citations instead of being booked into county jail to save money for the cities. However, the fact that we still had an intoxicated person that was basically taken home and had the ability to continue driving is a great concern of mine and I'm sure it's a concern of yours. So I understand the need to increase our budget if the VLF fees or the replacement do not come in. And I understand the time crunch that we have, we have to get this implemented before July 1, so the cities, of course, can correctly budget what their booking fees would be. However, I think that we're all in the same train of thought of saying, if the state does come through with booking fees, then anything that's gonna happen today, I hope the board would put on the back burner. So that's where we stand, the $100,000 in the whole scheme of things with a $19.5 million budget is, is not the biggest fee increase that we have. And I just do not want detrimental public safety situation to occur. There have been situations where drunk drivers were arrested before given citations, taken home, and within hours, they were arrested again for finding someone else's car to drive. And that's where public safety comes into play. And then the second thing that happens is if a, if a police officer does issue a citation, let's use petty theft, for example. They'll issue a citation to someone at a local store for petty theft because they want to avoid the booking fees. And then that person doesn't show up for court, what happens is now that's a sheriff's office warrant that goes out, and the sheriff's office will make the arrest, and there's no booking fees involved whatsoever. And please remember, when the state did pass the law allowing booking fees, that state agencies, CHP, state parks, and so forth, are not required to pay booking fees. This is only, it only really impacts incorporated cities. So I would encourage this board to pass the resolution you have with the caveat that once the state budget comes in and there's replacement money for VLF, that we take it off the books. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from board members at this point? Supervisor Hamburg.
Tom, I just had one thing I wanted to clarify. Section 29550.2. So somebody, somebody is booked and, and obviously, there's a fee attached to that and all the, all the different fees are listed under that section, you know, the laundry, the, you know, all the stuff that might be involved with bringing somebody in. But as I, as I read this, the fees only apply if the person is actually convicted of a criminal offense. Is that correct?
That's not correct.
I'm reading it wrong.
Yeah.
Okay.
On your initial booking.
It says, if the person is convicted of any criminal offense relating to the arrest and booking. So you mean, even if they, they are found innocent by a court, they're still, still responsible to pay the booking fees?
It's my understanding they are. And you're reading something that I don't believe the, I refer to county counsel on this one because it's been the initial bookings and not the secondary bookings. When a person is booked and then say they bail out or they're released on their own recognizance, then if they're rebooked for sentencing, there's no booking fees paid on that. It's just the initial booking.
So somebody would be responsible for paying a booking fee even for an offense for which they were later found to be not guilty?
It's my understanding, you're correct.
That doesn't seem fair to me, but maybe it's just me.
Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, maybe I'm misinformed, but I thought the booking fee is paid by the arresting agency and not by the individual.
Well, that's correct. It's by the arresting agency. The defendant, the inmate, is not the person responsible for the $41 charge.
Supervisor Pinches.
Well, I understand the sheriff's argument about, you know, maybe it might be the reluctance of some city police officer to book a person because their agency's gonna have to pay the $41. But I really think in most cases, not maybe in all, in most cases, I don't think $41 is gonna basically discourage a police officer from sending a guy to jail that needs to go to jail. And keep in mind, this is the only way that we have, the county, to recover, you know, it's not just the sheriff and jail budget, the major general fund hit, but it's the district attorney, the public defender, and all that. And this is really the only way we have to get some sort of a cost recovery back from the cities. And, you know, we charge the people out there, with this board, not with my support, but has supported the full, what's called a full-cost recovery on fees. So we don't have any trouble charging the private sector full-cost recovery. And by law, we can only charge 50% of the administrative costs. So I think this is something, if the revenues come in from the VLF backfill, that's fine, but I think we need to put this in place and I support it.
Any other questions from board members at this time? Okay, we'll go to public comment on this item.
Hold on a second, I do have a question.
Okay.
Jeanine, could I ask you to explain this section to me?
Which section are you looking at?
I'm looking at 29550.2. And it looks to me like the county might pay the fee upfront, but then they're looking to the individual to reimburse for the costs. Isn't that right?
We've never done that.
This is under the CSAC memo section, I believe. Oh.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the statute, so... Well, it looks like this is a direct appendix from the government code section, so... So you're looking at which section?
29550.2, section A. I must be just reading something wrong.
Is the caveat on the first two not covered by sections 50 or 50.1?
Mm-hmm. Okay, not specified.
Right. So this is, yes.
That brings up an interesting question. Does, if, let's say the city will arrest somebody and they, they're responsible for the $41.05 booking fee. Are they, can they actually try to recover that cost from the person that got booked?
What this section seems to say.
I think this section, and this is just to real quickly, relates to those folks who are arrested by the state agencies who are not charged... Who are not charged the booking fee. And the statute does say that they could be charged the booking fee individually, and then it does provide that if they, you know, were not convicted, then maybe they don't have to pay, they wouldn't be required to pay. So I think that's what this section relates to, is to those folks who are arrested by the colleges and the universities and the state agencies that are exempt from the booking fee to begin with.
But my question is, let's say a city cop arrested me and I took, they took me to jail, and the city would give, be guilt, bill the $41.05. Does the city of Willets, would they have the ability to come back and recover that cost from me as the person that got booked?
That's not my understanding from the statute, no.
If they do or not, Supervisor, that's never been implemented by any of the cities we have.
Okay.
Okay, let's go now to public comment. Anyone wishing to address the board on this topic, please come forward. Okay, seeing, seeing no one, we then will go back to staff to issue any final comments or additional remarks.
I would like to just say that right now, that the budget as it's being proposed is hopefully gonna be scheduled for this late afternoon. And it is a partial funding of the amount that we were looking at for the vehicle license fees. It wasn't the full amount that was originally put in for last year, so it is partial. And the other is, the action that we're looking for from the board today is two parts. We're looking at repealing an existing ordinance that's on the book as a cleanup measure, and then the other would be adoption of a resolution that actually would let us implement the fees.
And then, isn't there a third part now? Calling for rescinding the ordinance in the event that funding comes from the state?
Yeah, if, if funding does come from the state, essentially, the resolution would be rendered moot anyway, but we would bring it back for rescission. I'm asking you to go ahead and repeal our existing ordinance because it's outdated to begin with and we should clean that up at this time.
Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. But nothing additional needs to be done to guard against the jurisdictions being charged once funding is restored. You know, because I think the concern is, we're adopting this contingent on the funding not being provided by the state. So do we need to say anything, either in the motion or the resolution, to clarify that?
If that's the board's desire, then yeah, you could go ahead and make, clarify that in the, in your motion, that you're asking the department to wait 30 or 60 days pending the adoption of the budget by the state?
Well, well, no, I think they would begin charging once they can legally charge, but as soon as the money is being provided by the state, if it's restored, then they would quit charging.
Right.
Right?
You want to make that clear in your motion, that's fine.
Thank you.
The government code section that we're actually following to put this through says without any subvention. So it is only tied if there's no money coming in. If money comes in, it's a moot point. So it is in the actual government code that says it's contingent on no funding.
Right. So just the recommended motion is sufficient? So moved?
Yeah, but if they, you say funding coming in, what if it's not the full funding? Then we can still implement the booking fees, right?
The government code section says no, it's, it's, there's no funding, no subvention whatsoever. That's what's allowing us to come forward, is the fact there's no subvention.
But what if there's only 50% of the money coming in and we can still implement the booking fees, right? What if only, the law says that if the subvention comes through, then we can implement the booking fees. But if, what if they only send half of the money? We can still implement the booking fees?
Well, it would depend on what the bill says, and we won't know that until it's been signed, so...
So Supervisor, was that a second to the motion?
I got one other question.
Then, then let me, Supervisor Pinches.
And I'd like to clarify one point as well.
Let me second. So we can have discussion.
Okay, so we have a second by Supervisor Brown. So council, you wanted to clarify?
I do want to clarify, if you go up to 29550.1 of the section, when I was looking at point 2, Supervisor Hamburg, it does say that any city, district, school district, so it does apply to the cities, is entitled to... so it does apply to the cities, is entitled to recover any criminal justice administration fee imposed by a county from the arrested person if the person is convicted. So it does allow the cities to go back and recover those fees from the individual if they are convicted.
Sounds.
Okay Supervisor Pinches, an additional question?
Because it's the sheriff's in jail that does the cost, this administrative cost, so will that, these revenues stay within the sheriff and jail budget? They will be as a revenue for the sheriff and jail budget, right?
Correct.
Yes. So any additional comments from the public? Okay, seeing none then, the chair will close the public hearing, the matter is now back in front of the board. Did the clerk want clarification?
I would just like to clarify the motion that was made. It does not include the potential of the funds being reinstated because it's in the recommended action motion as is.
I think it's just the recommended action, right?
Yeah.
Yep. So that was by Supervisor McCowen and a second by Supervisor Brown. Okay, any more additional discussions to the motion? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote the buttons.
Motion passes unanimously.
Good, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, we'll go now to agenda item number 7D. This is an off agenda item by Supervisor McCowen related to the United States Post Office decision to close the Ukiah Main Post Office?
Madam Chair, since we're maybe running a little behind, we can take this item up at any time later in the agenda.
Okay, I just thought, I think we, I think we actually are doing okay with time.
Well, at your discretion.
Yeah, I think, I think we're doing fine.
Okay. So this item would have the county, first of all, if we take it up, and the need to take it up is that if an appeal letter is to be sent, it needs to be sent prior to the board's next regularly scheduled meeting. So I'm requesting that we make a motion to consider this item based on the urgency.
I'll second. So we have a motion for an off agenda item as described by Supervisor McCowen, a second by Supervisor Brown. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously to take up the item.
And then the item is to send an appeal letter which, of the decision to close the Ukiah Main Post Office, the appeal does not involve any liability or expense to the county. It's simply, the county is going on record that we're opposed to the closure and appeal it. The Ukiah City Council has taken similar action as well as the Ukiah friends of the post office or whatever their name is. So I would make a motion that we send the draft letter.
So we have a motion? Supervisor McCowen? Second. And we have a second by Supervisor Brown. Discussion on the motion, Supervisor Pinches.
I will support this letter, but I have a little trouble with some of the wording. I think it's a really sad day in America in this, where we have to go through the NEPA process to close down a federal building or something. I mean, think about what that does to the management. We talk about how the federal government, it's what, going on 14 trillion and how many billions in the annual deficit and it thinks that, you know, I mean, think of the management ability that takes away if everybody threatens you with to go through the NEPA process if you want to close down a federal, exactly what we're doing to downsizing our county business. What if we had to go through the NEPA and CE process because say, we know what, we're going to move out of that building and move people in this? I mean, think about that. I just think, I think, the issues about how it's important to the community and services to people, that's all great, but to basically, I maybe threatening is a strong word, but to bring up the idea of, well, you should have went through the NEPA process to do this, I think it's a little, little extensive.
Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well Supervisor Pinches, in general, I don't really disagree with your comments, but I do think the federal government should follow their own rules and the National Environmental Policy Act is a federal rule. So if they're going to enforce it on us, they should abide by it themselves.
Going to the public, any public comment on this off agenda item? Seeing none, we return to, to the board. Any final comments Supervisor?
No.
Your final, okay. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, hearing none, that passes unanimously. Moving on to agenda item number three, this is approval of minutes, those will be continued. These are the June 14 minutes, they'll be continued to the next meeting. Going now to the consent calendar, which is item number four. Going to board members for any comments or separate actions on consent. Supervisor Hamburg.
Madam Chair, I have questions regarding item seven.
Okay, item number seven. Any others? Okay, let's go ahead with the balance of consent, but first I'll go to public comment. Anyone from the public wishing to address the consent calendar, please come forward. Okay, seeing, seeing none, all those in favor say.
Well, we need a.
Oh, we need a motion, that's right.
I'll move approval of the consent calendar with the item of, with the exception of item seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we have a motion by Supervisor McCowen and a second by Supervisor Pinches on the consent, minus item number seven, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, hearing none, that passes unanimously. We'll go now to item number seven on consent, Supervisor Hamburg.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This item first came to my attention at the end of the EDFC meeting this month and Supervisor McGowan, I think you were there, but you may have left before we did the kind of go around the room and have, and a representative from MPIC, the Mendocino Private Industry Council was in attendance and brought to my attention, and I guess the attention of the rest of the EFDC board, the issue of the county contract for MPIC services. And specifically the issue is about reimbursement and whether it's an advance payment or a reimbursement after the services are rendered. And I've just asked that Stacy be here this morning. Stacy here?
Yes, right there.
Oh, there's Stacy. I've asked that Stacy be here this morning because she and Pat Meek have been negotiating this contract and maybe you could update. What I noticed here on the consent calendar was that there was a termination date of the last day of 2011, December 31st. So I would just like that clarified as to where we will be going the rest of the fiscal year with respect to this contract.
Sure. Stacy Cryer, Health and Human Services Agency Director. We are in negotiations with MPIC. There is a question on whether or not we continue with advanced payments or switch to the reimbursement model. We're still working on those particular contract items with them. In the meantime, I needed to get the amendment in front of the Board of Supervisors, otherwise service delivery would have been halted come July and I would have no mechanism to pay them at all. So I wanted to get, while we were still in negotiations, I wanted to get an amendment in front of you so that there was no disruption of service. We are continuing to actively recruit and are working on a year-long contract with them.
Okay. And that contract will likely be on a cash advance basis or that's still in negotiation or can you?
We're still in negotiation on that. They have requested it to be continued on a cash advance basis. I am in the middle of drafting a memo to the CEO's office explaining where, how we got here and some of the history behind this and why we're making this decision to switch to a reimbursement model. She'll be getting that sometime this week and we're still in negotiation because there obviously is some cash flow issues on their side and there's some risk on our side, so we're still negotiating that item.
And I understand there's a tie-in between this contract and the viability of Myakama. Is that true, Myakama Industries? They're not tied to this MPIC contract?
I'm looking at Pat.
Okay, Pat doesn't know that.
I haven't actually been negotiating this contract and I'm looking at Kathy, who's the web chair.
It hasn't come up. I've got to work.
It hasn't come up? Okay.
There are some members from MPIC here that perhaps could answer that question, I'm not sure.
You know, I think the board, certainly this supervisor's supportive of the activities of MPIC, particularly in this kind of economic climate we face today. And it was, it was noteworthy to me that on page five of this, I don't know if it's the actual contract or just an attachment, but you look at the average earnings of people who are entering the work, you know, re-entering the workplace as a result of, you know, the job retention and job creation activities of MPIC and it's, it's pretty, you know, it tells a story. $12,500, $14,800 for dislocated workers. I mean, these are people who are kind of hanging on by their fingernails in this economy.
We are supportive of their efforts as well and we're confident we'll get to a successful negotiation.
If you're confident, then I'm confident. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and I'll move the item.
Second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Hamburg, a second by Supervisor McCowen to the motion.
I also do have some questions however, since, you know, we're already discussing this. My understanding is, is that the department went out with an RFP for this contract and MPIC submitted the successful proposal. And, you know, I, we've had a conversation which, you know, I regret we didn't have a chance to talk about this before putting you on the spot here, but it's my recollection that essentially MPIC was the only qualified firm or entity that responded to the RFP. No one else that, who responded is currently capable of providing the services, is that accurate?
We had no other responders that we were going to negotiate with.
And, and what they were submitting a proposal on was a contract to provide the services for the entire fiscal year.
That's correct.
And so subsequent to, and then was the, the no advance payment part of the RFP that was put out?
No, it was not.
So that came up subsequently, so.
Correct.
You know, I, I would hope that, given that there's no one else in the ballgame yet and that they responded to an RFP based on the terms of the RFP, that we would follow through and although we have a six-month extension in front of us, I would hope that we would have an additional six-month extension coming back in the, in a short timeframe. And then if, if the department wants to put them on notice that this is not going to continue on, then everyone has a sufficient amount of time to adjust to what next year's requirements are going to be.
Our hope is, our intention is to have a one-year contract, that is true, and our hope is to get one negotiated sooner rather than later. Again, I couldn't take, we couldn't get the contract negotiated and in front of the web board quickly enough to have it take effect July 1. So we would have had a disruption in service and we couldn't, we couldn't have that. So I don't know if county council wants to weigh in on the verbiage that was in the RFP, advanced payments versus reimbursement or not, no.
Well, if it wasn't in there, I don't know how we'd negotiate that in after the fact.
We didn't say it was a reimbursement contract either. There was no, which either way.
Right, and the question that was raised during the process was, do we, are we giving a preference to those contractors who don't need to be paid upfront? Or, yeah.
Right.
Or those contractors who are willing to be paid upfront and since we didn't have any kind of language like that in the RFP, then the answer was no.
Right.
We're not giving preferences, we would have said that in the RFP. But that doesn't mean that the board can't negotiate terms of payment and that's what they're attempting to do.
And as I stated, I am submitting a memo to the CEO detailing some of the reasons that we would prefer to switch to a reimbursement contract.
Pardon?
That we want to switch to the reimbursement model versus the advance model.
Well, I understand the reasons for that and I'm not saying it's inappropriate, but, you know, it's like changing horses in the middle of the stream. So if people are proceeding on one basis and on one understanding, it would seem appropriate to tell them in advance before we're going to change that. So that's my point. So hopefully those negotiations conclude successfully and promptly and we will be advised.
We are, we are looking towards a one-year contract. The next web meeting is in August, they don't meet in July, so the next time we get another contract in front of them will be August. So you'll see it sometime right after that.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Going to public comment on this item, this is item number seven on the consent calendar. Anyone wishing to address the board, please come forward.
Hi. Hi, Madam Chair, Supervisors. My name is Candy Delos Santos, I'm the Executive Director for Mendocino Private Industry Council. Two things I want to address. The first one was your question about Myakama Industries. They are a subcontractor of MPIC to provide services to the developmentally disabled and other disabled customers at the One Stop. Their contract is based on our funding, so we are not able to enter into a full year's contract with them either, so they have budgetary concerns as well. Also, we don't, if we're on a cost reimbursement basis, it'll take us longer than to make sure that they get reimbursed for their, their services as well. So it does affect Myakama and without our funding, it's only, we fund about half of their program this year, which means that they may not have to, they would have to shut down their program as well. So it definitely does have a snowball effect on our subcontractors. And I just want to state that MPIC did, I am in negotiations with HHSA and the web and we did apply for an RFP in good faith. It does state in the questions and answers about cost reimbursement versus advancements. The answer was that the current contractor, which is MPIC, does get advancements because they can't afford to be on a cost reimbursement basis. We don't have other funding streams. So having this hit us, we were kind of blindsided by this. We weren't told of the cost reimbursement issue until about a month and a half out when negotiations first began. So it was very difficult for us and it's something that we have been fighting very hard to keep our advancements. So we're looking for a new contract, we're hoping for, which is what we applied for. And, you know, like I said, we're in negotiations, so I won't speak more to that, but it is without another funding stream to advance ourselves while we wait for advancements from the county, it's, or cost reimbursements back from the county, it's very difficult for us to operate. So I appreciate at least having some attention brought to this, this matter, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address this item? Item number seven on consent. Okay, seeing none, I think we already do have a motion and a place and a second. So all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Moving on now, we'll go to supervisors' reports, standing committee reports, ad hoc committee reports. Are there any?
Supervisor reports?
Yes, of any type?
Yeah, I do have some.
Okay, Supervisor Hamburg.
Just a couple of things. I attended the graduation ceremony for the Family Dependency Drug Court on Thursday. I'm sure that other board members have attended that in the past, but I just want to say that that's a very worthwhile event and I just want to publicly congratulate Superior Court Judge Dave Nelson and the staff of CPS and the staff of, I think it's called the Family House. It's, it's an amazing effort that goes into helping people who have had their children removed from the home by CPS and in almost every case have issues with, with addiction. For those people to go from that situation to reclaim their lives is, is just hugely heartening. I was very glad to see the sheriff there for that ceremony and there were, there were other elects there that I'm not. For those people to go from that situation to reclaim their lives is just hugely heartening. I was very glad to see the sheriff there for that ceremony, and there were other electives there that I'm not naming, but I just think it was a real testimony to how people can put their lives back together if they get professional help, you know, from the courts, from our health and welfare-related agencies. And it's just, it's just very heartening, very heartening. So I hope that we'll continue to attend that event and, you know, take some lessons from what's shown during that graduation ceremony. On Wednesday, I went down to Santa Rosa to meet with our friend Corillo, who is the Fifth District Supervisor in Sonoma County, and we had some very interesting discussions. Sonoma County is, I think the Board is aware, is really moving forward with establishing an independent energy authority along the lines that Marin County already has. In fact, Sonoma County may end up partnering with Marin County on their energy authority. And as the CEO has let us know recently when she toured Calpine, there are some major geothermal projects going on just a couple miles from Mendocino County line. And Sonoma County is definitely looking at that new geothermal capacity as part of the mix when they, you know, if they basically take over from PG&E in being the purveyor of energy for the people of Sonoma County. And as you know, Marin County has already done that. Sonoma County is looking at it, and I had a very interesting discussion with that friend about some of the other things that Sonoma County is involved in. One project is using chicken manure to supply electricity to run the Sonoma County Water Agency's pumps. Yes, chicken manure, creating methane and running the, taking care of the electrical needs of the water agency. I thought that was outstanding. We also discussed the issue of certificates of compliance, which has come up before this Board recently in Booneville. And Supervisor Corillo pointed out that the Preservation Ranch Project, which is, again, right on our southern border, very near to Walala, 19,000-acre conversion of timberland to vineyard is happening largely through the vehicle of certificates of compliance. And this is a project that is still kind of wending its way through the planning process. Supervisor Corillo said probably the Board wouldn't be looking at it for at least two years. But this is kind of the same kind of issue we're looking at, and I know Supervisor Smith was in Sacramento yesterday looking at the issues before the Wildlife Conservation Board, which is considering two major sort of anti-fragmentation measures, the Walala River Forest and the REFI Project, which will kind of prevent exactly what is happening with Preservation Ranch, or potentially could happen with Preservation Ranch, where you have a large block of timberland which gets divided up into 20-acre parcels for ranchettes. And we have tons of these certificates of compliance, of course, throughout Mendocino County. The Board was unsuccessful during my first term on the Board in utilizing the window that the state provided for counties to get a handle on CCs. And as I mentioned earlier, I talked to the Resources Secretary. Supervisor Smith was there as well, John Laird, about creating a new window for counties to try to deal with CCs. And as I said before, Secretary Laird was supportive of this. He thought there could be legislative action. But, you know, and I've been talking to Janine and Nash about this. This is not a simple issue. In fact, just talking about this can create a rush of people going to the counter to exercise their CCs. So, you know, we don't want to move precipitously on this. You know, it may be something that we, as Mendocino County, can't handle because it is too big. It's a huge issue, and there's a lot of lobbying in Sacramento and probably in this county as well. I mean, there certainly was when I was on the Board back in the '80s. You know, there were a lot of people in Mendocino County who definitely wanted their right to go to the Planning Department with 100-year-old maps and claim that they had legal parcels. So, you know, this is not an easy thing, but it was interesting to have Supervisor Corillo bring this up as something that is so on the front burner right now in Sonoma County with respect to the 19,000-acre Preservation Ranch Project.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Supervisor Brown.
Thank you, Chair Smith. And Supervisor Hamburg, there was also a big issue with CCs and Williamson Ackland, Humboldt County. And Humboldt County went to court and spent at least a couple million, unfortunately, to prove, I guess, to make some lost stick. And there were bills that were introduced, but that's also something, you know, you should look at.
But Humboldt County lost.
As a history, yes, they did.
Yeah, this takes legislation to do anything about this.
I attended the area agency on aging last week, and the advisory, Legislative Advisory Committee to that body brought forth a platform on a number of bills that they would like to have supported. It was too late to get it on our agenda. The governing board could not approve it because it was not on their agenda. So I'm going to be looking at those particular bills and moving forward with them. Usually, we would probably go through our Health and Human Services Standing Committee, but with outstanding committees today, I think this is the only avenue that we have. And I will try to do my research prior to bringing that before you.
Any other reports?
That's it.
Board members, Supervisor McCowen?
The Mental Health Board met on June 22nd, and although I had to leave the meeting prior to them taking action, it's my understanding they unanimously voted no on approval of the Mental Health Services Act Plan. And if it's not covered in the CEO report, perhaps we could get an update from Director Crier.
Stacy Crier, Health and Human Services Director. That is correct. I was not at the Mental Health Board meeting as I was on vacation, but my understanding is it was our public hearing for MHSA plan update. And after the end of the meeting, at the end of the meeting, there was a vote by the Mental Health Board to not approve the draft plan moving forward. I am going over to Mental Health right after this meeting to get a little more detail on exactly what happened. I do want to remind this Board that this year, the process for MHSA funds is different. It used to go through a state approval process. This year, that has been eliminated, and it's a local approval process. That hasn't really been defined yet by the state, but my guess is that will be through the Board of Supervisors. Mental Health Board approval is not technically required for that, but we, of course, would desire them to approve the plan. If we don't submit the plan by June 30th, which is Thursday, there is a high probability that we would not get funds. We would not get the money associated with the MHSA plan. So my recommendation, probably at the end of the day, after I've gotten all the information, will be to go ahead and submit the plan to the state and then work with the stakeholders to get everyone on board. We can still amend the plan, but if we don't submit anything, we take a risk of losing a lot of money. So my plan today is to go get a little more information. All I have is what I've gotten in emails, and then issue a memo to, or email to the CEO and the Board about what's going on. But I, my recommendation at the end of the day will most likely be to submit it just so we don't lose the funds. It's too big of a risk.
And that came out during discussion at the meeting, and it didn't, it did sound like unless the county wants to jeopardize getting the funding all together, we really do need to submit that plan. And then, as you say, we can work to improve it.
The Mental Health Board, my understanding of some of their concern was just about the process, using the Mental Health Stakeholders Committee versus outside process. So some of it's just some of the processes. We're all new to each other still and just trying to work our way through some of this. So Tom's over there meeting with some of the stakeholders now. He's met with four different stakeholders, and I'm going to get briefed here in just a few minutes.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
And Tom is the interim Mental Health Director.
Correct. Supervisor Hamburg?
Stacy, I assume that part of the MHSA is the money for children's mental health?
EPSDT dollars? No.
No, that's a separate issue?
Yes. There is money that goes to some of the providers, like, for example, RCS gets funding through the MHSA plan, but it's separate from the EPSDT dollars. It's a separate funding source.
What about the dollars for tapestry?
It's a separate funding source as well. It's EPSDT dollars. This year, they took MHSA reserve money and used it to fund EPSDT, but it's not through the same process.
And I understand there's a $1.3 million cut in children's mental health services coming down the line next year?
EPSDT, as I said, they're giving us a block grant, so they're taking the MHSA reserve money, and they're funding Medi-Cal Managed Care, EPSDT, and AB 3632 services. So you have to kind of figure out what the formula will be on which program gets the money. EPSDT is an entitlement program.
Right.
As I stated at the Board at my last report, we are the second highest in the state per beneficiary. So we spend about three times the statewide average per child on EPSDT services. So if the state begins to fund at the average level, then we would lose considerable amounts of funding. It's an entitlement program, so we would have to take funds from adult mental health to cover the children's services if we kept them at the level we are now.
Well, I understand there's more money coming down for adult mental health.
The mental health money is changing every day. I just got an email just now.
Well, as of yesterday.
From Pat Ryan. We just got an email that stated that the, on the table is the Public Safety Realignment, which includes EPSDT, Medi-Cal Managed Care, and Child Welfare Services. So that's looking to be eliminated as of right now.
Well, I just want to say, I, you know, I don't like what's happening.
No one does.
Specifically with EPSDT, which I understand is a court-mandated program, and if there were persons in Mendocino County who were not getting, regardless of where Mendocino County stands in the 58 counties with regard to how much money is spent per child, if a person who's receiving services presumably for their child, if those services are taken back because of this $1.3 million that's no longer going to be there, wouldn't we be in a situation of being liable for?
Again.
I mean, not liable, but we could be sued for that.
EPSDT is an entitlement program. So if the children are eligible for the service, the length of service that they're getting at the, at the level of service they're getting, then we have to reimburse for that. So it's an entitlement program. We'd have to reimburse for that expense. The question is, is can we serve for a shorter period of time? Can we look at the intensity levels, those kinds of things?
But somehow, we are cutting $1.3 million.
Of the contract.
Of the contract.
Yeah.
Which is a 15% cut.
We've negotiated 15% reductions for the EPSDT contracts based on reduced funding coming in next year.
For tapestry and Redwood Children's Services. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other supervisors' reports?
I just have the one comment that Supervisor Hamburg alluded to. Wildlife Conservation Board, WCB, it does appear that although they have not scheduled the meeting, that it will be late July that they will have a special meeting to consider the Walala Forest project and the USAL Redwood Forest from the Redwood Forest Foundation project at their July meeting. So that does appear to be going forward, and that date should be set shortly.
Chair Smith? Yes.
When you're through, I do think of something.
Yes, go ahead. I'm through.
I received a phone call as well about the budget, the state budget, and there evidently was something attached to the budget itself on timber harvest plans and a $40 million revenue as a part of the budget that would be divided through, you know, statewide by the submittal of timber harvest plans. And that was a concern expressed to me. I don't know if it's still in there or not, and it looks like we're going to have something probably by the end of the week or at least know where they're going to be going with this budget. I don't know if it's still in there or not, but I, if possible, if we could get that information back in time for our afternoon session, I'd sure like to know.
I think that's a good point. I did actually speak yesterday with Crawford Tuttle from Department of Forestry, and he did not mention that issue specifically. But he did say how things were changing, just like Stacy did on a day-to-day basis, so.
Okay, yeah.
That's a good point, though. I'd like to go now to Supervisors Brown and McCowen for item number 8A. We do have one final closed-session item that we do need to get to before lunch, but we do have a little time. We do want to conclude closed session before the lunch hour, so I'd like to go to the two sponsors of this item. Would you like to take up that item now?
Sure.
Okay.
It's appropriate. I know we have people here that wish to address this. This has been an ongoing issue that this Board has been involved in since 2009, spring of 2009, and fully supported our community partners as IWPC, Russian River Flood Control, Potter Valley Irrigation District, Redwood Valley County Water District, and the list goes on. So we are coming forward. We have a comment period on the State Water Resources Control Board and their proposed draft for Russian River Frost Protection Regulation and the draft EIR. Supervisor McCowen and I were able to work on a letter, work on the draft. So the agenda summary said a letter would be authored and signed by the Chair at a later time, but that letter was handed out, I believe, this morning, correct Supervisor McCowen?
Last night.
Last night, okay. And so we do have a draft letter in hand. I tried to put in this agenda summary much of the background and what we have gone through during the process, what has been done by the local Ursa group, working on BMPs for frost protection. There has not been an issue since it was brought up by NOAA Fisheries in 2008. Since that time, the new information is finally under the Freedom of Information Act. The evidence came forward that NOAA enforcement was working with and was quite a surprise to all of us because it really was nothing. And so we have some issues with that. The letter addresses investigation. All the entities that have submitted or have draft letters and will be submitting to the state are asking for a full investigation. And the information that we have takes us through the entire timeline. That was done by Sean Wright, General Manager of Russian River Flood Control. Also, I think it is a very similar process in the way it's been going with government as the Marine Life Protection Act. And the county did weigh in on that. Supervisor Smith represented us. I don't, I can't remember Supervisor Smith was Supervisor Colfax involved in that or just yourself as our appointee?
On the MLPA process?
Yes.
Yes, he was involved for a period of time locally on that.
Okay, so both the coastal supervisors. And, you know, certainly we needed to do that, and the main reason was because Mendocino County needed to be represented and to weigh in on the issue because it certainly looked like constituents and coastal interests were being bypassed.
I don't think, Supervisor, that we weighed in on the specifics. We, it basically was to try to get, as this Board will remember, the local process in place and get the funding mechanism so there could be the support individuals to convene the local process and then link us to the larger process of the North.
And it was somewhat different, but the process was, is that we had to intercede into it, along with Humboldt County, in order to get a process that works for the local people. And I think I'm correct on that. So Supervisor McCowen?
Thank you. And I would like to add that, you know, what is before us really is a continuation of a position that the Board has taken since, I think, probably March of 2009. And so over that period of time, the Board has submitted a series of four letters commenting on this issue and basically taking the consistent position that the real solution to this issue is not a heavy-handed regulation imposed from above, but to continue to is not a heavy-handed regulation imposed from above, but to continue to work with the Upper Russian River Stewardship Alliance, which in partnership with other regional stakeholders and private landowners arguably has solved the problem that led to the reported fish strandings in 2008. And I think the comparison with the MLPA process is that with MLPA, you essentially have the agencies paying very little attention to the local stakeholder input and not welcoming nor valuing the local knowledge that was essential, I think, to coming up with a more balanced and fair and also effective approach. And so we have a similar thing here in that the agencies have completely ignored the work that the Ursa group has done, which has led to enhanced data collection, stream flow management protocols, and the construction of the equivalent of over 90 cubic feet per second of off-stream storage, which more than offsets the maximum recorded drawdown of 83 cubic feet per second that is believed to have led to the problem on the Upper Russian River. So, you know, I think also, and Supervisor Brown mentioned, the emails which revealed that in fact, National Marine Fisheries Service and the State Water Resources Control Board and other agencies were essentially colluding. At the same time, they were meeting with local stakeholders to work out appropriate protocols to resolve the issue, which arguably has been accomplished by the work of Ursa. At that same time, then they held a secret meeting after the stakeholder meeting, and a staff member of the State Water Resources Control Board suggested that they would like to get a letter from the National Marine Fisheries Service expressing the need for regulation. And then subsequent emails confirm that that same staff member encouraged the National Marine Fisheries Service to explicitly say in the letter that there was a need for emergency regulations. So I think this kind of undermined, or very definitely undermined, the stakeholder process. It also calls into question the independent decision-making role of these different regulatory agencies, and I think it's really unseemly that they would be, at the same time they're having this above-board meeting to try and come up with appropriate protocols, they're having a backdoor meeting to decide among themselves how they're going to use this as an opportunity to impose regulations that arguably are not needed. So again, I just think it's a continuation of the path the board has been on for three years with a series of four letters sent by unanimous consent. So I would urge the board to hear the public comment, discuss the item, and then hopefully we can agree to move forward with this letter.
Thank you Supervisor. Anyone from the public wishing to address this topic, please come forward. State your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Janet Pauley, Chair of the Mendocino County Inland Water and Power Commission. I would urge you to send this letter for a number of reasons. One, I believe the county would like to have standing in this issue moving into the future. As Supervisor McCowen mentioned, a tremendous amount of work was done in over two years. Thousands and thousands of hours were spent by people volunteering their time, going to the state board, going to workshops, trying to learn how to monitor stream flows, getting grower groups together to analyze impacts on different tributaries and on the mainstem. Millions of dollars were spent. Some of that money was matched by grant funding that was acquired to try and get the impact of instantaneous demand for frost protection off of the mainstem and the tributaries and put that water into ponds so that the water could be collected at a time that wasn't, didn't have as much impact on the river. All this work was done for a tremendous amount of time, and all the while, we kept asking the National Marine Fisheries Service to please give us the information that they really had about what had occurred. How many fish were stranded? Where did it happen? What were the conditions so that we could react appropriately to the problem? When we finally did, first of all, they said, "No, you can't do that because it's under investigation." When we finally did get the information, it required a FOIA request, a formal FOIA request. We got the information from them, and a story began to unfold that was absolutely remarkable. The bottom line is that no regulation is required because there is no evidence that farmers did anything wrong. But there is clear evidence that there was collusion between staff members in the State Water Board and NIMPs in fabricating a story and exaggerating data to the point where they told a story of something that never happened and blamed it on farmers. It's as clear as it's in black and white, and we had no idea of this. Now that we know this, it changes our feelings a little bit about how this should be handled. After the FOIA request was granted and we received the information and started going through it, and thanks for the flood control for taking Sean White and making, you know, having him take a tremendous amount of time to put all of this evidence into chronological order and write it all down so that it's very clear. When NIMPs gave that information to us, I think they finally realized that, oh no, we have a problem here. And they manufactured, manipulated data in a new report this last March in an attempt to justify what they've done to date, and they took 10 little juvenile fish and multiplied that into 25,872 dead fish. I think this is a big problem. I think the directors of the State Water Resources Control Board have been deceived. We were deceived, and this shouldn't be left unaddressed.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address this topic, please come forward?
Devin Jones, Mendocino County Farm Bureau. Just to kind of give you an update, yesterday, Al White, who is a grower for La Ribera Winery here in Mendocino County, and myself, flew down to Long Beach to meet with head officials at National Marine Fisheries Service specifically over this issue. We went through the FOIA document word for word. We showed them the documentation that we had, some of our concerns with what has been going on behind the scenes, to see what their response was on this issue. We also mentioned the study regarding the extrapolation of the 25,000 fish number. Our concern this entire time is that really what we're looking at is not about the fishery. It's been hiding under the guise of the fishery, but a lot of this has been about control of the water rights system. And the regulation as written, even if we were to follow every mandate within it, isn't going to bring the fishery back or promote the fishery to the point that NIMPs is looking for. We explained to them that, you know, in order for us to really get back on track, to bring this back to the fishery issue, it needs to go back to that collaborative approach that started in 2008, the goodwill that was put in place to push this cart up the hill. One of the examples that we used yesterday regarding this process was, you know, we felt like we were working in good faith and moving forward. Voluntary effort was put in place. Even after that letter was released in November of 2009 requesting the emergency regulation, we still felt that there was a chance for us to demonstrate on a voluntary basis that working with the agencies, we can come forward with a solution to benefit both the fisheries and the agricultural industry in both counties. That being said, that was not recognized, and I think a lot of that wasn't based on scientific documentation, as Janet mentioned. And our concern is this, you know, going for this regulation isn't going to benefit the environment, it isn't going to benefit the fishery. All it's going to do is monitor for the sake of monitoring. It's going to be a huge expense to the industry, and any time you take a huge expense to industry, that money can't be funded for projects that could actually benefit the fishery. And that's sort of what our conclusion has been. We don't have the scientific documentation that has shown us where the best results would be to do the monitoring, where the best results would be to put in additional off-stream storage, to provide additional waters for the fishery. This isn't an issue that's going to be forgotten. This is definitely something we're putting full effort into working towards a resolution toward. One of the other issues we brought up yesterday was the claim, the industry has known about this for years. You know, in the room yesterday, we had about 70 years of experience in the viticulture industry. No one had ever heard of this as being a major problem. You know, we went through the biological opinion, the Section 7 consultation on the Russian River, which was to determine the flows for the Russian River system. It was never mentioned, being a concern with that process for flood control, or, excuse me, for frost protection. So that being said, I think yesterday's meeting was worthwhile to go down there. I don't know if anything's going to be changed because of it, but moving forward, we really encourage NIMPs and Fish and Game and the regulatory agencies to bring this back to working with property owners and not against them. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Brown.
Yes, and I would like to at least comment or ask Devin.
Devin, I think you need to-
I'm sorry.
Come back, there are going to be some questions.
I'm working with the off-stream ponds and some of the other ideas that Ursa has come up with in order not to have a direct diversion impact, whether it's on the mainstem or the streams. How well has the State Water Resources Control Board worked with you and helped you through this process?
Well, as far as the water, Devin Jones, Mendocino County Farm Bureau, as far as the water rights process is concerned, it's been quite the challenge. We've put in infrastructure to the, to date. I know most folks are in the process of going forward with a change of use to go from diversion to storage. It's still drawn out very lengthy. Al White at La Ribera was sort of our test example, and that was working with Victoria Whitney at the time. His water right has been changed, but he was willing to sacrifice quite a bit of that water right in the process. That being said, it hasn't been easy, put it that way. We haven't seen a lot of willingness at the state water board level to more collaboratively work on resolving some of the water rights issues by making it a more simplistic ability to either convert existing water rights who may have a high summertime usability that would rather be used for frost protection. We haven't seen a whole lot of willingness to go from direct diversion to storage. We've had issues with some folks who would like to, you know, possibly look into putting in wells, but now that groundwater has been drawn in on this issue and no definition of hydraulically connected groundwater, that has been very difficult for individuals to justify the expense of placing a well system in place to offset the surface diversions. So is that your question, Carrie?
Yeah, basically, yeah. So there has been an attempt to work with the State Water Resources Control Board to, so there isn't direct diversions.
Correct. But one of the things I want to remind the board is that, like we've seen here in this county, staff turnaround at the state water board has been fairly severe, and it's very difficult even for those individuals who've been in the water right process for 25 years. The staff at the water board who were working with them on their water rights are no longer there. There's no longer a contact that's, you know, that allows them to continue with the process. It's been very difficult for me to assist specific individuals with providing those contacts at the state water board because of some of this transition that's taken place. So it hasn't been easy, but that, we have requested that, that could be the biggest benefit that the water board can play is to assist these individuals who want to do the right thing to be able to sort of simplify and fast-track the process.
Thank you. And just one statement, Chair Smith, that I would like to make about problems. There was a problem, a de-watering on a tributary. I believe that was in the late 90s, maybe 1998. The person creating the problem was individually cited and, I believe, fined. So there is one example that I'm aware of. Thank you.
Supervisor Hamburg.
Yeah, I just have a question for Devin. Sorry.
And I do as well.
I do want to mention-
Stay up Devin.
While Devin's coming to the mic, that when I found this 13-page FOIA, this material that was put together by the Russian River Flood Control District, I guess specifically by Sean White, when things show up in our packet without attribution, it just, it really bugs me. I don't think things should be in our packet if they don't have attribution. I mean, if it doesn't say who did this, I mean, I did receive an email from Lee Howard, so I assumed it had something to do with Russian River. But, you know, here I've got the 13-page document, which I read every word of, but, you know, it wasn't until I, you know, did some research that I even found out where it came from. So I just want, this is not really to you Devin, this is just to, maybe to admin. I think when things are in our packets, they should have attribution. They should know where it came from.
It was an oversight on the part of Supervisor Brown.
Now, more interesting to me is that you, you were at this meeting in Long Beach yesterday, and you went through this FOIA information with representatives from NOAA.
Correct.
Is that correct? And there is, you know, both in the FOIA materials that Sean White put together and in this letter that was prepared by Supervisors Brown and McCowen, there is some very strong language, some language that I consider to be pretty accusatory. And because of that, I am concerned that there is no one in this room apparently from those agencies to defend themselves, and there's nobody here from Congressman Thompson's office, and of course, he's also, you know, he's prominent in this FOIA information. But, you know, just some of the words accusing them of meeting secretly, conspiring to manufacture a need for regulation, scuttling efforts at collaboration in order to justify the expansion of their jurisdiction by keeping evidence unavailable to stakeholders, exaggerating the extent of the issue, creating contrived regulatory pressure. I mean, some of this may be true, and I'm sure there's people in this room who totally believe that to be true, but the way I tend to try to operate as an elected official is to, you know, before using this kind of language, which I think is inflammatory, I like to know what the other side of it. I'm not an expert on frost, on drawdown of rivers for frost protection. You know, I don't know a huge amount about it. You know, I'm just up here trying to figure out who's right and who's wrong as best I can, given my limited background and understanding, but, you know, it's just, it's just hard for me to just say, "Okay, they're wrong, we're right, and, you know, they're way out of line, and we're," you know. I do, I have heard from multiple sources that the control board and NOAA have not taken sufficient account of all the work that's been done. And I know it's been millions of dollars, you know, these ponds that have been built, the gauges that have been put in. I don't minimize any of that, and if they have failed to account for that effort, then they should be called on the carpet for not being more cognizant of how much work has gone on. And Janet referred to it too, the hours and hours that people have put in going to these meetings and trying to be part of a collaborative process. But anyway, to make a long, you know, to get off my soapbox, what was their reaction when you showed them this material? I mean, did they just say, "Okay, you got us, we're the bad guys"?
Devin Jones, Mendocino County Farm Bureau. I wish that was their answer, not necessarily the case. Fortunately, I guess, to answer your question, we did have more staff from NOAA there yesterday than expected. Originally, the intent was to meet with Rodney McGinnis, who is basically the chief for the Southwest Division. We did have four staff members from Long Beach there, as well as three members from the Santa Rosa office, a number of them referenced in the FOIA document themselves, as well as about five other staff from the Santa Rosa office on the conference call. So pretty much, all the players that have involved to date, especially in this FOIA, were present on the phone. We were concerned, and, you know, Mr. White addressed that specifically, Al White, at the beginning. He asked Mr. McGinnis, originally- Originally, the intent was for us to meet with Long Beach staff, and we said, "This may be uncomfortable for staff in the room currently," but we asked that we can go through the entire document without, you know, having interference, and we did that. We had some discussions. We answered some questions specifically from Mr. McGinnis, and then he did actually refer to the Santa Rosa staff in the office to say, "Do you have comment or question concern?" And none was expressed in the room. There were some comments on the phone. We did receive a comment basically stating that regarding, one of our issues, as mentioned there, has been this sort of this double standard as far as the release of information. You know, we were supposed to be completely open and forthcoming, but we saw some resistance the other way. And the answer that we received from that is basically they are willing to present only what their county, what their council was letting them release, which was very difficult for us to see based on the fact that, okay, we did have this ongoing investigation that was the excuse of why we weren't given the information, but once that investigation was supposedly closed, we figured there would have been some willingness to therefore share that information. As you see in that document, this year Sean was still subjected to going through the FOIA process even after that investigation was closed. So, that was discussed. Another comment that was made was, "Well, regarding enforcement, no one's been arrested to date." And that was, we really didn't, I didn't, you know, revert back to commenting on that, but I stated I was concerned that, under the ESA, you know, you do have the ability to do the enforcement. Part of our concern in this process, from the agency's perspective, is they've wanted us to be the hammer in this, to turn in the bad apples if we find them. And, you know, our concern with that is it's going to revert back to neighbor against neighbor. I mean, who wants, you know, who in the local entities wants to be that bad cop per se? We said, "Look, we're willing to work with you to resolve this issue, but you guys, that is really your position. You are the enforcement agency." And you're right. I mean, they've got a very, you know, from their perspective, they have a difficult task to accomplish here because no one knows what the problem is, what the extent of the problem could be, what it's been in the past, and that's what we told them yesterday. We're not saying that it's not a problem. We're saying we don't know what the problem was. We don't know what the extent of the problem was. We're saying that the problem seems to be extrapolated beyond the information that's been provided to us to resolve this problem. We're not going to be able to resolve this problem, really, if, you know, like I mentioned earlier, truly for the fishery, until we know what you're looking to accomplish. You know, right now, they're, they're asking to do, for instance, in Sonoma County, you know, they have gone forward with, you've probably heard, some of their ordinance protocols.
Right.
Our concern up here is, that seems really duplicative to this point without knowing really where this regulation is going forward. We have been working on collecting information. I mean, they're a little bit ahead of us down there, but that's sort of what we let, you know, we took the incentive initially in 2009 on the infrastructure perspective on the main stem. We really don't have a major tributary issue here. You know, that's more so in Sonoma County. They have really stepped up to try to work on resolving some of those issues by collecting data. The other advantage that we have up here is we do have the Flood Control Agency that is an agricultural water district. There is no agricultural water district in Sonoma County currently, so they're using some of that infrastructure to try to develop something possibly moving forward. And we don't know what this water demand management program component of the regulation is going to entail. We presented a document that's about this thick. We don't know if any, or any of that's going to be used in the future, so it's really hard to decide how you're going to work towards resolving a problem when you don't know-
Right.
-what the problem is.
Did you, did you perceive any progress yesterday?
I think it was worthwhile going down there, let me put it that way. I think that Long Beach perhaps hadn't been completely informed of some of the things that are going on. You know, we, we recommended to them that this regulatory approach with the inclusion of hydraulically connected groundwater, of which there's no definition, the reasonable use doctrine, which is sort of this, the state water board's legal hammer in this process, is going to lead to litigation some way, somehow, and none of us really know how. We're just proposing this is probably what's going to happen, because it's going to be fought statewide as precedent-setting issues, not just here in the region. And so, you're going to take all that time, energy, and effort that can be used to focus to resolving this problem, and it's going to be drawn out, and a tremendous amount of money is going to be spent, and what's going to benefit in the, in the long run from this process. And so, we, we really encouraged our, you know, Al and I, our message to them yesterday was, "Look." The February '09 letter from NIMPs is what started this. The 27,872 fish that have been proposed is the documentation that NIMPs is using to provide to the state water board to give them the reason for regulating. We encouraged them to go back, perhaps consider submitting a secondary letter. We don't know if they will or not. There was not anything that was said, recognizing the fact that this-
Now, this, this, excuse me, but this is a secondary letter to the one that they prepared, you know, this biological context letter on the spring '08. Is that the-
We were asking-
That's the one that names the 25,000?
Correct. That's the 25,000 fish.
And is, is that the one that you would like to see a revision of or a reconsideration of, or?
The letter I was actually referencing was February 2009. That was a letter that initially NIMPs sent to the state water board requesting for them to do the emergency regulation. That's what really started the regulatory process to go down the pipeline. As Supervisor Brown had mentioned, in 2008, there was a collaborative approach, but we're talking about four months before this. All of a sudden, we saw this sort of undertone come forward with staff from the water board recommending this regulatory approach. So, between December and February, December of '08, February of '09, that's when we saw this transition take place. So, it's really hard to work in good faith over a three-month period to come up with a solution for a problem, when then the whole train seemed to have gone down this different track, and we've been split ever since. You know, split between actually doing on-the-ground beneficial projects for the fishery and then spending a tremendous amount of time dealing with sort of this regulatory side of things.
Right. So, you are still hopeful that, that a lawsuit might be averted?
Correct.
I mean, I know there's a lot of energy to, you know, to sue.
Well, here's the, here's the, the point that I'd like to make. I don't think any of us want to sue. I think all of us, you know, through our sequoque comments, we're preparing pretty substantial comments going through the secret documentation to demonstrate, hoping that the state water board will take our recommendations to see where they could look into making this regulation if it goes down that pathway, something that is actually workable and will accomplish the supposed goal of the fishery without going into the regulatory water rights perspective. But-
Well, in the, let me, let me just get done, so, because I know other board members want to talk, but just in, you know, in light of trying to get back to a collaborative approach, you know, between the farmers and the agencies, do you think it's productive to accuse the agencies of conspiring to enact unnecessary regulation? I mean, is that, is that a, is that a positive step forward in terms of trying to create a collaborative approach? I mean, or is it just so clear that there was a conspiracy going on that we should name it and let them defend themselves?
I think there's truth to both, both of your points. I think that, you know, we're basing our conclusions off the information we've been given. If they have a different conclusion, they haven't brought that forward. I mean, obviously, we know that the agencies work together on various levels at all times, but based on what we've seen, comments we've heard, some of the personal agendas that we've been witness to, it's difficult for me to say that the collusion did not take place for a specific agenda from a specific staff, not necessarily representing the entire agency. I think that's something that needs to be made clear. I think that Long Beach definitely saw a little bit of light yesterday regarding some of the things we brought forward from that, that document that we presented to them. I think they questioned some of the lack of transparency on behalf of their staff with us. I definitely think they saw that.
Yes, well, they should.
You know, and the only reason I think that, you know, you can't necessarily let this get swept under the rug is because this is happening in other places throughout the country as well with some of these agencies. You know, we've been looking into some of these, not to drag this on, but, you know, Boston, some of these other fishery, coastal fishing type issues where, you know, charges have been made, but funds have been inappropriately used. I think NIMPs, in order to avoid that black eye, to get back on a better public perception, needs to hear some of these things. I mean, honestly, that was sort of what our mission was yesterday. They don't have an easy job, and we understand that, but if their job is to protect the fishery in the public interest, you know, resource properties are a large component of that, and you're not going to get that collaboration and that trust to work with fisheries agencies if you're basically thinking your head's going to be in the noose. I mean, no one's going to volunteer to put gauges on their property to try to resolve the problem if a problem comes up that they weren't even aware of that was going on.
Right.
And what is the, you know, what is the quantitative description of that problem, the analysis of that problem?
Yeah. Okay, well, you know, I could ask more questions, but I-
Let's go to Supervisor Brown.
Thank you, Chair Smith. Just some points, and thank you, Devin. On the FOIA, I think, I believe the cost was $1,600 paid by the Russian River Flood Control Supervisor Hamburg.
Yeah, I saw that.
And most of the information they got had to do with their own board meetings and minutes. Also, Congressman Mike Thompson, when we weren't getting anything to tell us how to move forward about where were the strandings, what did occur, how many fish were impacted, he actually did go to NOAA and was refused the information. He was given nothing because they used the same term. It's still under investigation. Also, and I think Devin did mention this, but it, she didn't, I want to, we're a little bit different than Sonoma County in the way they're going about it, because we do have entities such as Potter Valley Irrigation District, Russian River Flood Control, and Redwood Valley County Water District that all provide ag water, and everyone is metered. I mean, they, they know what water is being used, where it is, et cetera.
Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, I think we should probably get back to the public, and then you can come back to me if you will.
Well, I had a question for Devin, and-
Oh.
I never got to ask my question.
Devin, back up.
So, Devin, could you come back and come?
I just, it was, I was just waiting as the chair to go last, and you were there, and it's musical chairs. So, would you give us a little context for this meeting that you attended yesterday? What, who convened the meeting? Was it an open public process? Was it part of the, the draft comment period in that the proposed draft regulations, and so this was an opportunity for individuals? What, what, what's a little more about that session yesterday?
Devin Jones, Mendocino County Farm Bureau. This meeting sort of got combined at the, at the last minute. Originally, we worked with Heidi Dickerson, with Congressman Thompson's office, and by "we" it was local growers, not myself specifically, who wanted to see a little bit more impact, or not impact, involvement from NOAA higher up. And we felt like dealing with staff at the Santa Rosa office hasn't progressed. There's too many dogs in the fight. We wanted to bring our, sort of our opposition or our concerns to someone higher up in NOAA. So, a meeting was worked with Congressman Thompson's office, both here locally and the DC staff, for Mendocino County to have a meeting with Rodney McGinnis, who is the chief, the top of the top here in, in the state. Unbeknownst to us, actually, Sonoma County was working on some of a similar arrangement, and I guess great minds think alike. And so, Pete Opats and Bob Anderson, two local folks from Sonoma County who've been involved in this process for quite some time, also arranged a separate meeting, not through Thompson's office, with different staff at NOAA. Ironically, ended up being on the same day. Originally, we thought that Mr. McGinnis was coming to Ucaia, so we actually didn't get plane tickets till Thursday. We realized that that was not the case. And so, we figured that both Bob and Pete were going, so there's four of us present, you know, growers, and like I mentioned, we originally thought it'd just be ourselves with Mr. McGinnis at 1:00, and then the, the other staff would come in at 2:00. This shows sort of a united approach. We decided that both Sonoma County representatives and Mendocino County representatives should be involved in both meetings. It actually became one meeting, like I mentioned. And to our surprise, there was quite a few of the Santa Rosa staff unannounced to Congressman Thompson's office as well that ended up being present, both on the conference call and in, in the meeting. So, that's really how it was established. It was not a public meeting. It was just sort of a, our goal was to go through the FOIA documents, bring up our concerns. Sonoma County wanted to do a little bit of an update on where they were at with some of their ordinance proceedings, et cetera, and actually ask for some clarification points within the regulation, so.
Okay, thank you for that. Let's continue with public comment. Mr. Howard?
Good morning, Lee Howard, Russian River Flood. I'm going to back you up just a little bit further, because you, you've heard today what we've been through to a degree. You're not getting near the story, but when we went to Sacramento in the first round two years ago now, we said, "Look, state water board, we can work with you. We'd like to work with you." It was almost a no right then. I mean, they said, you know. Then, we started through the process of starting to do things, and the Flood Control District in Mendocino County is a lot different than Sonoma County. See, you can't even compare the two of them. There is no comparison there. The Flood Control District has spent hundreds and hundreds of hours and quite a bit of our money facilitating to keep an industry that we feel is important in this county. We had the water board people over here, invited them over, toured with the Farm Bureau. Charlie Hoppins was here, Pam, the likes, all of them were here, but nothing really seemed to change. It was always something driven. There was a problem. Somebody had a problem with what we were doing, and even when we came up with solutions, you ask, you know, "What does it take to, to change a water right, to make it move forward so you can change a pond?" There was a question. One of the best ones was when we, when the Flood Control District said, "Look, will you, you're not going to let the farmer use his own water because it isn't in time. He can't store it." The Flood Control District turned around and said, "Hey, we have the right to store our water, and we'll give it to, we'll sell it to the farmer, so he can put it in the pond. Is that legal?" Initially, they said, "No. No, you can't do that." Well, we have a couple friends over there, and one of them came to us and said, "Here's the code section that says you can." So, we took it back to upper staff, and sure enough, "Oh, where do you guys find this stuff?" "That's not your business. It's ours." And we turned around and we started using this water for the purpose of reducing the demand. Dan, I hear your concern. The reality is, this is a two-year issue, that people have had all the opportunity in the world to work together and do something. The Farm Bureau went to the state and did a public records request. There was a lot of things in that public records request that started indicating there was a problem. So, we, at the Flood Control District, said, "Look, we better think about this. Let's do our four-year request to the feds and see what came back." I'm here, standing here today to tell you that they sent us $1,600 worth of bullshit because half of it is our own paper. They knew full well, and there's things that aren't in that four-year request that were in the public records request from the state that are in them. So, they gleaned the package. We didn't get a whole package. I'm telling you that we didn't get it all. There's still more.
Mr. Howard, could you wrap it up, please?
I can wrap it up and walk away, but the reality is, is the letter that you're looking at is essential. If you think that you can shake the chair of the water board up a little bit so he can say that there's a problem here, the reality is, is these people have stonewalled us, blackmailed us, and everything else. I'm sorry. It was my fault that our name is not on that report. I asked initially that it go out without our name on it. I won't do it again, but there was reasoning for that. The vindictiveness that they show is unbelievable. And if you want to take some time and hear a two-hour recitation of some of the things that they've done to us, anytime, Dan. Thank you.
Mr. Howard, Mr. Supervisor McCowen has a question.
Pardon?
Supervisor McCowen has a question of you.
Supervisor McCowen has a question of you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I think you've confirmed that, that this document that was provided, which is a compilation of commentary and excerpts from emails that were received through various Freedom of Information Act requests. This was compiled by the Russian River Flood Control District and specifically the Director Sean White, or General Manager Sean White, and yourself would have worked to put this together?
Yes.
And so...
And it's been, also, a couple other board members have been involved in it.
And would it be fair to say that Sean White, working under the direction of the board, was the, the lead on putting all this together?
Yes.
And, I mean, is there any doubt in your mind that he endorses the, this document?
No, there is no doubt in my mind. And, you know, he's, he's put a great deal of time in it, as we all have. It got reviewed by the board. It wasn't released until it was. The, it is a document from Russian River Flood Control and Water Conservation Improvement District, and we stand by it because of the documents that are in there.
And in fact, from 2008, when this first became an issue, and particularly starting with the Upper Russian River Stewardship Alliance, Sean White's been involved every step of the way in coming up with the proposed solutions to the problem, advocating before the State Board. November 10, 2010, he was one of the presenters of the Ursa proposal to the State Water Board.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Anyone else for public comment on this item? Please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll return back to the board.
And just a quick comment, Supervisor Hamburg. They can get very vindictive. And Russian River Flood Control is trying to go to license, which they told them would be 18-month process or a year's process. And three years later, two years later, four years later, they're still struggling.
Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, and some of the language might be a little bit blunt, but also in Supervisor Hamburg, in your comments, you were quoting both from the flood control, flood district document and the letter, and they don't each say exactly the same thing. But the, the statements that, that lead me to conclude, there was conclusion, there was a conspiracy, are taken from their own emails that they provided. They provided the smoking gun that confirmed what we had suspected. There were members in the community that had heard about this separate meeting that took place after the stakeholder meeting. But I think we could certainly soften some of the language. But I, I think that it should still be a strong letter, and it should call for full transparency and an investigation. So with regard to the third paragraph, I would suggest that we could say, in the third line where it, it picks up, "While ostensibly engaged in a collaborative stakeholder process, met separately with other agencies and apparently conspired," because that's, that's what apparently happened, based on the way I read this stuff.
Yeah, you, you have...
And, and I think we could also say in the line right above that, that confirmed that a member of your staff, rather than your staff. So I would suggest those changes to the letter. But I don't think we should let them off the hook for working behind the scenes when they supposedly were part of this collaborative effort, which was official policy of, of NIMPs. Their official policy was to work collaboratively and only go the enforcement route if that wasn't working out.
I think it was Supervisor Hamburg, then Supervisor Brown, then Supervisor Pinches.
Well, you know, I, I don't, I don't want to say a lot more. I have a different definition of conspiracy than you do, obviously. I, I read the same document you did, and I didn't see it as conspiracy. You know, I do believe that these agencies collaborate. And I've been around the federal government long enough to know that agencies talk to each other all the time. And just because they send a letter to another one, and some of that language ends up in the document, another one, this happens every day in government. Government agencies collaborate with each other. And if you don't like their conclusions, I think you should say, "I don't like your conclusions," but not accuse them of, you know, what almost sounds like, you know, I don't, maybe it's not criminal behavior, but in a sense it is, because you're saying that public servants are deliberately acting in contravention of the public interest.
They did.
Well, you know, I don't agree. So, and the other thing that, that I object to is this coming to the board, and I realize we're not meeting next week, but this thing has been out for a long time. And why are we here at the very last minute, you know, a letter that came to us this morning, having to act on this? You know, I, it's just not the way, you know, I just think there should be more consideration. And I realize that there's this whole, you know, precedent. But I wasn't on the board when these precedents were established. And, and I'm not, you know, I'm not held to things that David Colfax agreed to.
Supervisor...
And I'm not saying I wouldn't sign on to a letter critiquing their activities and saying that they should give more credence to the efforts that are going on, you know, with the, with the Ursa. I would sign on to that. But I'm, I'm not going to, I'm not going to buy into the rest of this.
Supervisor Brown.
Thank you, Chair Smith. Also additionally, what I'd like to see on the letter, we should send CCs, and certainly Senator Feinstein and Boxer, because they have both weighed in on this particular incident, and US Representative Mike Thompson, our State Senator Evans, and our Assembly Member Wes Chesbrough. So I'd like to see the CCs added.
I'd like to make a comment. I haven't commented on this yet. My concern is, is a little bit more on the intention of draft Russian River Frost Regulation and Frost Regulation Draft EIR. So we don't have the document in front of us. It's not here. It's available online. But it seems to me that the point of an elected body is to comment on their process, what, what, what we are in concurrence with, what we object to, and have a detailed technical document that we would move forward to the agency. That, to me, seems like it should be our role. And unfortunately, we don't have in-house staff to assist with that. But I think that that would be the role of the Board of Supervisors is, I mean, to me, that, that's what is timely here with respect to, according to the agenda summary, it says, "These draft regulations have been posted with final comments due by July 5th." So, so to take off and, and continue, if one would like to see it as that, and that's what's been stated here, that we're continuing a dialogue, we're continuing content that's come forward before, and we're now weaving it into their, to the draft document. I, I think a letter like this, if one would want to send it, could be sent kind of at any time, because it's, it's, there's quite a bit of innuendo and accusatory language. And, and it's not exactly, I don't believe, really in sync with commenting on their draft regs to the specific things about being constructive, what we support, what we object to. And if we object to clear specifics that they're proposing, why do we object to them? Talking about the, the local process here that, that, that has been pointed to has been very successful. Why is that not woven in? So I, I suppose it's along the lines of what Supervisor Hamburg is saying, but I think it's also different in that I'm looking at the technical application of what you do when you have a draft comment period. And to me, this letter, it's almost like there's an opportunity to use the draft comment period to make the points that are talked about in the letter. The FOIA request, the various things that have happened that people are upset and concerned with. And I'm, I'm just not sure that that's the best, the best use of the opportunity. And I, and I, I think that if we are trying to get to that collaborative process, there's a, a much better avenue that this comment period that concludes July 5th offers us, and that we're really not getting there with this, with this approach. I just don't see that we get there with it. Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, this is the item before the board, and it is well within the purview of the board to offer the comment that the board wishes to offer. I think certainly the, the criticisms of the process that they went through, that letter could be sent at any time. But because it was these separate meetings and these back-channel communications that they were having among themselves are what led to their, to their push for regulations. So I think it's entirely appropriate that the board comment on that, because the entire package in front of them is not justified, or they have not demonstrated the justification for it. So I think the two go hand in hand with regard to our comment letter. And if you have any doubts about the propriety of that, I would suggest you check with county council. But it's well within our purview, it's my belief, to send this letter. And I don't think it's loaded with innuendo. There's one sentence in there that comments on their process based on what they say about it.
Yeah, my comment, Supervisor, were not that it's, that it's, that it's not within our purview to send it. That, that's not my point. I just don't think it's the best approach to creating good public policy. And if that's really what our goal is, I just don't think that, that this approach is, is what the supervisor supports. That's all.
I disagree, because we're arguing in favor of transparency. Let's have an open process. That's what they ask of the stakeholders.
Understood. I understood. That's your opinion. Yeah. Okay, Supervisor Pinches?
This isn't the first time I've seen a regulatory agency, whether state or federal, what I believe is not in the best public interest, and basically staff people just going on their own agenda that will bypass what's happening there. It's a prime example. But probably shouldn't be me one drafting this letter, because it would have probably been a lot more.
Okay. Okay, so let's, let's wrap this up. Let's go ahead and vote by the buttons, please. The clerk is clear with the motion.
I think we would need a motion.
But we don't have a motion. That's right.
Do not have a motion?
We have two sponsors.
So Supervisor Pinches, do you, then...
I don't want to soften the letter one bit.
Pardon?
I don't want to soften the letter one bit.
Oh, okay.
Well, let's make, someone make a motion.
But I would, I would like to see the carbon copies added to those that I stated.
Sounds good.
So I'd like to move the recommended motion with the CCs added to the letter.
And the clerk captured those, I'm sure. Okay, so we have a motion by Supervisor Brown.
So moved, or second?
Second by Supervisor McCowen. Any more discussion to the motion? Okay, please go ahead and vote by the buttons.
Motion passes with Supervisor Smith and Hamburg dissenting.
Thank you very much, Supervisor.
And they're actually fortunate that we didn't put in another paragraph on how you fraudulently go from ten documented fish based on...
John, since when are you a fisheries biologist?
[laughing]
Since when?
Okay, you can propose another letter.
Supervisor Hamburg...
Bring it back next week, Supervisor.
Supervisor Hamburg, Dr. Polly is.
So I'd like to ask the CEO...
Well, Madam Chair, if I may, I am making a comment. I have the board...
Excuse me, excuse me, Supervisor.
Go ahead. Go. I, I'm just trying to get us out of the door here.
And I, I believe they are fortunate. We did not add a paragraph commenting on how you take a documented death of ten fish, and you, by an entire series of assumptions, completely unsupported by any data of any kind or any science, and you multiply that to 25,872 fish. If that isn't proof of bad faith on the part of the agencies, I don't know what is.
So bring it back, Supervisor, as a letter, then.
Yeah.
Yeah, bring it back. So I'd like to go to the CEO. Should we proceed, we were, we had reasons that we needed to get to closed session to conclude before this afternoon. What, what is your opinion on that now?
Madam Chair, you have, you have two items left for closed session. You have a very short item that should take about five minutes, and then you have a performance evaluation. We had Mr. Brown come down here for an 11:30 closed session. So at this point, it's up to the board to either move forward with the two items. It should take approximately 30 minutes for both of those items, or save them for the end of the day.
Well, we did move forward an afternoon item and put it in for the morning, so that threw us off. Supervisor Brown?
I would like to put Mr. Brown's evaluation, closed session evaluation, ahead. Of anything else, he has very patiently waited.
I agree. So let's go ahead and do that, and we'll...
Can we have just a five-minute?
Yes, we can have a five-minute break, and then we'll adjourn to closed session.
Why not do it at the end of the day?
Okay, and then...
Well, because we never do it.
And then, Madam Chair, we come back at 1:30.
Yes, and then we will return at 1:30.
Okay, thank you.
For open session business.
So we're going to do...
What have we got?
So what...
The board is back in session, and we have nothing to report out of closed session. Just direction to staff. So we'll go to item number 6B. This is acceptance of the report regarding facility consolidation findings for Phase 2. The General Services Agency is the sponsor.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Krista McMinimy, GSA Director. I have before you Phase 2 of the report, the original report. Phase 1 was presented to the board on April 26th. And at that time, the board, we went, moved forward, and the board accepted the report. On Phase 2, I've just continued the same analysis as prepared in Phase 1, so you'll be familiar with the same documentation here. And we have moves 10 through 17, which basically is a total of eight moves in Phase 2. Before I go into detail on, on those particular moves, I wanted to go ahead and have a couple of highlights here of the staff report. On Phase 2, we're looking at the elimination of four leases with what's before you today. So both Phase 1 and Phase 2, that's an elimination of seven leases, which is in accordance to the board's directive to go ahead and look at the elimination of general fund and non-general fund leases with the county. Some of the factors, again, it's the same as Phase 1 that we looked at for the factor summarizations of 10, 7, 10 through 17 moves. You're going to see the exact same format. We use the exact same materials as well in developing the analysis. If you look at page 3, I wanted to just kind of go over really quickly before I go in detail on the actual moves. On the left-hand side, you're going to see Phase 1 results that I included. On the right-hand side on those charts, the first one says Phase 2, the second one says Phase 1. That is an error on my part. That should say Phase 2. So on your left is Phase 1, and on your right is Phase 2. That shows you the overall annual net savings. So for Phase 2, with moves 10 through 17, you're looking at general fund and non-general fund savings of a total of about six, over $600,000 just for Phase 2. Now, on Phase 2, as far as the one-time costs, you're going to see about a total, a little over $300,000. And we'll go into those in detail. At the very bottom, I had your totals for Phases 1 and 2. The first box shows a total of a little over, well, $927,000 in annual savings for Phases 1 and 2. The bottom should say Phases 1 and 2 totals for your one-time costs, and you're going to see $309,000 in one-time costs for Phases 1 and 2. If you look at page 4 of the staff report, I just combined together Phases 1 and 2 on the facility capacity study. So in both particular phases, you're going to see that there is 38% space that, you know, is vacant, and we're going to be utilizing that space. So when Phase 1 and 2 are... So when Phase One and Two are these moves, uh, once they're completed, I would like to come back to the board with sort of like the final analysis of the cost savings and things like that. Because on Phase One, which we're starting in now, we're already seeing some of the one-time costs that I had initially estimated, they're lower. So these numbers are just going to get better. And so at the end of all of that, I'll come back with the board and kind of finalize these particular phases when the moves are actually finished and finalized and completed. So if we can go into the summarizations, the first facility consolidation on the list, number 10, is the sheriff's, um, ID evidence. We're going to be, we're actually already starting the remodel right now, uh, of the GSA print shop area and a portion of the garage. And again, you're gonna see there's, uh, if you look at the net fiscal summary, there's an annual savings of about $35,000. There's a one-time expense of about $15,000 and that is due to the remodel.
What, what page are we on now?
Pardon?
What page are we on now?
This, uh, we are on...
For that one, okay.
The vehicle summarizations, page two of nine.
Yeah, okay.
The facility, thank you. So you're gonna see a remodel of about $15,000 and we've already begun that remodel right now. So, um, that's number 10. Number 11 is the sheriff's administration, which is located right next to the juvenile hall, uh, or juvenile probation building. They're, they share that building. We are going to be moving the sheriff's admin out and into the jail administration, uh, building. That, uh, will allow the accommodation of adult probation to move in and occupy that entire building, which is a much better space and place than we had originally had planned in Phase One. And it's also a lot less expensive than we had initially planned in Phase One. Facility consolidation number 12.
Excuse me, so adult probation, we'll go over and partially take that over, is that...
They'll, they'll have that entire building now.
Right, rather than going to mental health?
Yes.
Which will be better for a number of other issues as well, right?
Yes, yes. So, uh, facility consolidation number 12. Once we've finished the remodel of the mental health area, that allows planning and building to move out and utilize that space, the plan is to move your county IT department, which is currently located in the courthouse annex, into the planning and building area, uh, as well as the backend for the water agency. That will be the county's data center. There's, um, a lot of advantages, I think, to having, um, IT located within this facility. And you're going to see there is an, um, overall annual savings of $42,000 a year and then there's a one-time cost of about $12,000 when, when all is said and done. This will be an expensive remodel and, and an expensive move, particularly because you're moving a data center. But it's very doable and, um, it's something I'm actually looking forward to.
So what are we gonna do with that, that Cielo Bank America building, right?
It's coming. That's next, turn the page.
But I, I had a question there too, though, the, uh, the cost, 'cause it's, it's more than just remodeling. I mean, there's...
You know, there's no remodeling necessary for IT to just, you know, move into planning and building space. The space is fine. They, you know, we live in partitions over at IT now, so, uh, their, IT has looked at the space, no remodeling. The remodeling has to do with the data center itself. What you're gonna need to do is you're gonna have to have a raised floor in there. It's also needs its own HVAC and it needs its own generator and you're gonna have to, um, put a 420, um, power in there as well. So the wiring and that type of thing, that's the expense. The nice thing is, is the fiber dead ends right at, uh, the water agency. So that, that's a real plus and that's gonna help save some dollars versus if we were being located somewhere else, as far as the data center is concerned, you'd have to pull fiber.
So the infrastructure will stay in the annex?
No, no.
It's all gonna move?
All moving. All we're, all we need left in the annex is a small closet. That's it.
Okay, but it seems like that would be pretty expensive to move the entire infrastructure that's located there now. And then that can be done without disruption of service?
Well, you know, there is always going to be some type of disruption service. We would probably plan on doing something over the weekend, if you will. The plan is we've already, uh, have an order in for duplicating the racks here. So then basically what you're doing is you're just taking the equipment out when it's time to move and you're installing them in the racks. The plan is to have the data center up and ready to go. All we have to do is move the actual equipment itself, not the racks. Um, that's, that would take far too long and, uh, that's just not a good way to, to move a data center. So we would basically be duplicating the data center with, as far as the racks go and then moving all the servers and different equipment, moving them in over a weekend.
And then the cost to remodel that to accommodate the new occupant will be covered on that next page, the deals with that?
Uh, as far as the remodel for here, the data center, it's estimated at...
No, no, no for there.
Oh, to house the other occupants?
For the annex.
Yes, it's on another page, yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's on the next page. So facility consolidation, uh, number 13 and 14, you can look at both basically at the same time. Our plan is to take, uh, the courthouse annex and, uh, the public defender and house the public defender and the alternate defender. The public defender and alternate defender, they can't have access to each other's files or anything like that. Uh, there is an opinion which I have here and I've read and I've went over with county council. You, you have to ensure that there is no access. So we will be walling off sections. So the bottom section, the plan is to ha- house the alternate defender in a half of the portion of the bottom section, which is actually a larger square foot area than what they have now. And then the public defender will occupy the entire upstairs as well as a part, portion of the downstairs. I've already had the fire marshal, I've met with him and toured the facility and as far as exits, we have, um, a plan to wire them up to where if an alarm goes off and certain exits open so that we don't have any issues with fire alarms or fire exits in the facility. And I've been working with county council on the opinion, um, because I've read the opinion and it's my belief that they can be in the same facility so long as they do not have access to each other's files and that type of thing. You'd have two separate doorways. One would come in the very back where, where vehicles are parked, will have cameras so that we can monitor just in case. I, you know, I don't know that people right on State Street are gonna damage other people's, uh, vehicles in a parking lot, but that is a concern, so we can have cameras, uh, looking at that linked directly into the sheriff. And then the front portion of the building, which is on School Street, will be the public defender entrance. So if you look at that, there is considerable remodeling. Um, the, the alternate defender, there is, uh, there is an area that we will be, uh, putting in, uh, a couple of restrooms, which is downstairs. There are no restrooms now, so that is a big remodel as far as a restroom goes. I mean, luckily the pipes are already there, um, you know, it's just modifying the downstairs. And as far as the public defender side goes, um, you're looking at creating, it's interesting because if you look at the old plans of that particular facility, there was many, many offices there and now, um, through remodeling, there is no offices and it's just partitions. Um, that's how IT works best. And so we'll be basically putting all those walls back up in addition so that we can accommodate the amount of attorneys that in the public defender's office.
Supervisor Pinches?
What are you gonna do with that, the old safe?
The old safe stores files right now and I'm assuming it will continue to store files, although not the public defenders. It'll probably store the alternate defenders' files. It's just gonna stay, it's a, it's an interesting facility.
Yeah.
So that is 13 and 14. Facility number, um, before I get to 15 and 16, I'd like to skip to number 17 just 'cause 15 and 16 are on the coast and...
Ken?
Oh, yes.
Supervisor Brown?
Thank you, Chair Smith. I, I, I wanna go back for just a minute, uh, because it does worry me, um, with the alternate defender and public defender sharing the space and... County Council, can you...
Yeah, there is an opinion of, um, from the state bar regarding this particular issues and what, what the, the end result is, is if you can have adequate safeguards protecting the two offices from each other, then, then you're okay. I just don't know what those adequate safeguards are. I know Doug had been working on it, I have not been working on this, but adequate safeguards is the key. That, you know, they can't intermingle the clients, the files, the attorneys and that sort of thing, 'cause otherwise you'd have a conflict.
Okay. Next question, will there be adequate space for the public defender? 'Cause I know they're in an unsafe situation right now.
Uh, it's my feeling that yes, there is adequate space. They have a lot of files. Uh, on move 17, you're going to see we're converting the warehouse. We've got, we will have at least one, if not two bays if they need it. They do have a considerable amount of files there. And what I'm hoping is, is that in the courthouse annex, they're going to have a lot more usable space versus storing files and things like that. We can take those over to the warehouse and store those. Those are the files they don't need access to on a daily basis. And we are also gonna be providing a secure location for the files where only you can have a card key access, which is a lot better than, and than, than being stored in the poor basement that they have now.
I believe that the public defender is here, so since we're on this topic, let's have her come forward and address the issue.
Thank you. Linda Thompson, public defender. There, it is true that, in fact, there is also case law that discusses the ability of a public defender and an alternate defender to be in a same facility. However, they really have to be seen as two separate buildings or two separate office spaces. My concern about this and having us in the same building, number one, with the alternate defender's office, um, entering in that, through that back parking lot. Uh, and I understand the judges are grownups and the judges can probably accept that our clients aren't gonna do anything to their cars. However, I am concerned about all of the judges who park their vehicles there. We already presently have difficulties in parking for staff. People park in that parking lot from the brewery. I've had some difficulties with, uh, other offices having people stop there and even if it's just a few minutes, that's a concern. My concern as well, um, if you look at, um, I'm not sure where this is numbered, um, our square footage presently in the building we're in is 5,528. We received two separate floor plans from GSA and from, uh, Mr. West, the new facilities individual, and that shows our total square footage is 6,420. Now, I understand that's more than what we have now, uh, but I am still concerned with how the separation is going to occur. I'm glad Supervisor Pinches inquired about the safe. Um, right now, that safe houses hundreds of our files. And I understand that GSA is saying we can go ahead and now have the alternate defender's files go in there. I don't think that's realistic.
Well, not with yours.
I, I understand that, I understand that. But the, our files that are in the safe certainly could be moved to the warehouse that, um, Ms. McMenamy has talked about. But the other files that are presently in our office and the other files that are presently in our basement, and I know a number of supervisors have seen our office, I know Supervisor McCowen has stopped by before Supervisor Hamburg and Supervisor Brown, I know Supervisor Smith has, uh, Chair Smith has joined us before. It's true, we don't always need access to those files on a daily basis, but we need them every week. Um, and to have those separated from where we are physically is of concern because even though we are on an ongoing daily basis trying to purge the files that we legally can purge, we need those files accessible because we have 10-year-old probation cases coming up with new filings. Um, we have old cases that have been coming up that the DA's office, which I appreciate for Mr. Eister, is closing out 1989, 1990, those cases, he's purging those and closing those and dismissing those, but we still have to close those out, um, ourselves. And we need access to those. My concern is sending my staff to another location to have to pick up a file. Another one of our surprises recently, and I know Sheriff Alman has been wonderful in proffering inmates again, um, the chief probation officer notified my office about a month ago indicating, lo and behold, we found about 200 public defender files that were commingled with probation files and other files in an office that we weren't even aware of, which terrified me because even though they were from, I think, 1985 to 1989, they were still mixed in with other files. And so my office manager ordered a number of banker's boxes. Um, we've been through the process of inmates plus two of my staff boxing those up so they could be stored and, um, isolated and segregated from other, um, files. Um, the, I, I don't want it to sound as if I'm not appreciative of the opportunity to move. This move of the public defender's office to IS has been discussed, as far as I recall, for a number of years. Um, but the discussion had always been the public defender's office was going to be moved next door. Um, and if you're aware, we've, we've been in this building for probably 15 years. I know I've been there for 13 of those years. And during that period of time, we have been designated as a fire hazard. Um, we had biohazard, um, in our building for probably three months. I was concerned about the health of my staff downstairs. Um, one of my secretaries continues on rainy days to have to put a trash can on her desk to avoid the rain coming through. So again, I am very grateful that this is on, uh, for consideration. I would love the ability to move next door, um, but I am asking for consideration that it be our office moved next door. And please also don't take this as being flippant, but we would be more than willing to work with the inmates to move us ourselves. I know that you're probably aware, when the public defender's office moved from Clay Street to the Fiebush Building that we're in now, every member of that office, they had a pickup truck, called in friends and acquaintances, and they moved that entire, um, office to the Fiebush Building on their own. We'd be willing to help with the move in any fashion. We would be willing to help with the facility upkeep. Right now, uh, my understanding, at least at the alternate defender's office, uh, the janitor at this time helps dump the trash. Their landlord, um, assists with the cleaning of the remainder of the office. So we would be happy if a GSA could provide the services to dump our trash. We'd take care of vacuuming, we would take care of anything necessary to maintain that facility and I'm not shy about doing that. I'd be willing to go in on a weekend. I'd be willing to offer anything I could to try to make it safe for my staff, safe for our clients who are coming in, and I'm just concerned about putting both of our offices in the same location.
Thank you. Uh, Supervisor McCowen?
Uh, you first, Chair.
No.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, uh, my concern is that we don't get the full savings unless we also move the alternate defender into county-owned space, 'cause that's about $23,000 of projected savings. And I don't think the parking is an issue, 'cause there's no, there's allegedly or ostensibly no public parking in the annex lot now. So all of your clients are currently competing on the street for parking spaces. They would presumably be in the same position, or perhaps there could even be a few short-term parking spaces reserved for your office. So, you know, your, your main concern, and it sounds like the segregation of the offices can be accomplished, it sounds like the main concern is the space constraint and potentially not being able to have all of your files in the same building.
I'm concerned about the space constraint and notwithstanding the fact that there are opinions that say you can be in the same location, there will always be an ongoing concern of conflict of interest if you're in the same building. Clients are concerned about that, even if someone comes in the back door and my clients come in the front door. There is always gonna be that concern. And until there is, um, that we address the issue of a chief alternate defender being in the office, there are already some concerns and some rumors out there that I'm actually running both offices, which is not correct. I have done my best to distance myself. Um, I have proffered a proposal for an alternate defender that I think would meet with everyone's approval, that would then keep me out of that. I'm just concerned about the entryway in the back of that, um, in the back of that building. I appreciate that, uh, Kristin talked to the fire marshal because we all were concerned about fire exits and, and safety. I'm thrilled that I'm finally in a, going to be in a building that has, um, sprinklers. Um, so I'm happy about that. I, I think the fire marshal might be happy if we finally move next door. I think the fire marshal might be happy if we finally move next door. But I am concerned about storage. I am concerned about spacing, and that's true. You wouldn't get the full cost benefit because that is a $17,000, I think $17,600 lease that includes the utilities. So that's true. You wouldn't get that savings. But they're also within walking distance, so you're not having the cost of having to reimburse attorneys for driving to the courthouse. They walk to and from every day. We walk to and from every day. So we will do everything to help you if there's an alternative cost savings that we can contribute to, if that's, again, as we say, helping with the move. Anything else necessary, we'll do that. I was just very grateful when the alternate defender was able to have their own space. I felt much more comfortable with them at least being a couple blocks away from us because we were both having problems with some transients sleeping in the alcove between our offices and graffiti on both sides of the offices. So I'm just concerned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Brown.
Thank you. Ms. McMenamy, is there any other space available for the alternate?
The only other space available is here in the admin center. And I don't think that would be very cost-effective to have the public defender and alternate defender or one of their offices. We'd only really have room probably for the alternate defender in the mental health business services facility because all the other facilities will be taken at that point. Then you're going to increase costs for transportation back and forth because I know they run back and forth to the courthouse all day long. So that is the only other space that could be potentially looked at at this particular point. I do, I really, maybe I'm just a very optimistic person. I really believe that it can house the two. I believe that we can comply with the opinion, and myself and the public defender and the CEO are meeting tomorrow to discuss this issue and go over this particular issue. So I would like to still see it stay on the books. I mean, some moves change. You're going to see Phase One, what I presented, some moves are a little bit different. And again, this is an informational report to the board, and if something were to change and sure, if we were to come up with a conclusion that this just cannot happen, then we would report that, of course, back to the board and say, you know, we just can't accomplish this. But I'd like to try it.
I'd like to ask you about the parking. Is there anything available over across the street at Child Support Services?
Their parking lot is pretty full. They leave the front portion for their customers. The public defender already has designated parking in that particular spot. And once IT moves out, we have like five spaces that are going to become available that could be for the public defender and the alternate defender. So that's a lot, you know, more spaces for their particular staff. Because right now, I know their staff pays, and I know the county pays as well for a portion of county staff to have parking permits.
Supervisor Pinches.
Well, we've heard the concerns of the public defender. I don't really think any of us really have the expertise or the extreme knowledge of this building and whatnot. I just think that, you know, between the CEO's office and Kristin and the public defender, somehow, we know the concerns. I'm not saying we can alleviate all those problems, but we can make, we just kind of make it work. Because I think the square footage shows you can do it. You're actually getting more square footages than you have in leased space. So I just think we need to let these people do their jobs.
Ms. Angelo.
Madam Chair, as Ms. McMenamy said, my schedule has not allowed this meeting to happen with Linda and Kristin and myself. We are scheduled to meet tomorrow at 9:00, so I could report back to this board on my CEO report at the next board meeting, what the status is. I think there's been a lot of work that's gone into this. I'm pleased myself that we're able to move the public defender out of that space. We've all been there. We've seen it. So this is the only issue around the alternate defender. We'll meet tomorrow morning and I'll report back to the board if that is your desire.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the public defender, if you could come forward. Do you have any ideas, alternate ideas, about where, how spacing could be divided, keeping in mind that the leased spaces are a concern and issue? We're looking for that savings, obviously. But, I mean, you know the downtown area, you know the county buildings there certainly better than I do. So, I mean, have you thought this through so you would be offering another?
Well, I was hoping that, as long as I know this is tentative, I know that what the interest is, I would certainly like to proffer some choices. At this point, I haven't thought about that. Again, because in looking at the big picture of everything that you've done the last several months with the consolidations in Phase One, you're saving the county a lot of money. I guess, to me, I know $17,000 or $20,000 is a lot of money. But where they're at with their parking, they have a good space, their clients have easy access to them. So I don't have anything to put on the table, but I will certainly think about that.
Well, I think it's important to listen to the people that actually are in the building on the ground doing the work, and you clearly have the knowledge of the space needed for your files, also your staffing levels. And I'm sure you're also knowledgeable about the alternate defender. So I just think it's important to keep all these things in mind and, you know, and remembering that there can be flexibility.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, Ms. McMenamy has said that things can change, and so allowing for flexibility, maybe the process can continue to go forward.
And I just wanted to also be clear that we have had in mind that this is something that, before the board, we've been working on several different floor plans that we hope will assist if it does come down to the point where we have a portion of the ground floor and the full upper floor. It's just making sure that the ADO has it and to the point where our clients aren't running into each other, going to their appointments, and somehow what we do with all those files that are in the safe.
Okay.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, I didn't notice you had your coffee. I was going to call on him. Oh, it's behind you. I can't see it. It's behind your.
Oh, it's on my coffee cup.
I can't see it.
Sorry about that. No, I don't have anything more to say except, you know, I haven't said it yet. I really, you know, being in your facility a month or so ago, I just think it's amazing that you're able to function in that kind of condition, and I'm very glad that you're moving. And I just hope that this move can really accommodate your needs and the needs of the alternate public defender. And, you know, that really a full effort is made to make sure you have, you know, adequate storage areas because that basement, that's a scary place to have people having to go into all the time, and a little dangerous, too, I'd say. So, you know, it's certainly a department that needs an upgrade. So I'm glad that's in the offing.
Okay.
Okay. With that, I just would like to skip to 17 because I think it's a relatively simple particular move. We are, again, we're converting the warehouse. We've already been in discussions with HHSA. They have the majority of the leased storage space. We've come up with a really great solution. They're utilizing some meds money, and they're going to be having two bays, fully secured bays in the warehouse. And staff is actually, this is one of the things that staff is actually very happy about. Now, instead of going to different locations, they get to go to one location if they need any of their old files or what have you. But most of the things that they've placed in storage are things that they don't have access to or need access to on a regular basis. So that's it for 17. We'll also be, the warehouse will be able to hold up to about seven or eight bays. And so we're just starting with HHSA's bays first, and then when we start moving and other facilities need particular storage, because I would rather have a facility be used entirely with offices and people and staffing and consolidation versus files that, you know, they don't particularly ever get access to. And we have a number, county council included, that has a lot of different files that they, it would be great to store those off-site versus using valuable office space to do so. So with that, we are on Moves 15 and 16. 15 is the potential move, well, potential move to, from planning a building over in the Avala Center, HHSA Environmental Health as well, moving into the Fur Street facility. As you can see there, there is a total cost savings on an annual basis of about $22,000. There is a one-time savings of about $46,000 for this particular move. We have already have the facility ready to go. This move is actually scheduled, I believe it's for the 11th. Yes. So we're already scheduled, ready to move. We've got all the phone lines all ready to go, AT&amp;T, everything is scheduled for this particular move. So I have completed by July 15th, but it will be done by July 11th. So this move is already taking place. Then on the facility consolidation number 16, this is the Fort Bragg Social Services, the leased Avenido facility, and a proposed move to the Avala Center, as well as moving this double-wide modular that is here in the admin center, moving this over into Fort Bragg into the lot. That is also being proposed for this particular move in order to accommodate either individuals in a separate unit or files, or I'm, you know, Stacy. And then I've also assigned Janelle Rao to this particular move because it is a rather large move. So she has been over in Fort Bragg, have met with staff. We continue to have meetings to develop all of our plans for what this move is going to look like. You're going to see a net summary savings of $23,000 a year for general fund. The non-general fund savings on this facility is $343,000 a year. As far as one-time costs, you're going to see non-general fund, $153,000. $118 of that is for the facility. Those are the upgrades that normally the county would have been responsible for, for the Avala Center. This $118, it kind of depends because it's my understanding during the development of this, and as, you know, as soon as I print this out, things change. So mental health, this $118 includes everything being paid because it was under the assumption that social services would be occupying the entire facility. I believe mental health is going to be staying in a portion of that facility. So this $118, which, you know, will continue, a portion of that will continue to be picked up by mental health, so that number is going to be lower. That is the proposed move at this point, and I believe Stacy is here to answer any questions because, again, this is a rather large move, such as the mental health move into public health is a rather large move.
Well, Kristin, to number 15, well, these both interface clearly with each other. But on 15, which is the move to Fur Street, you know, I believe there are a number of concerns about that, and I haven't seen here, and maybe, I don't know when you did this, and if your funding estimates are current or if they need to be updated. But what about the concept? It sort of is along the lines of the public defender's concerns in terms of files. Now, my understanding is now, the thinking is that units will need to be moved to Fur Street to house files because the files are not going to be able to fit into the building.
Yes, after this documentation was printed, what we're doing now is we're looking at a potential, next to Fur Street, there is, it's one lot, but there is a vacant area of grass. And for about $3,000, I can purchase a unit where they can store files and kind of go back and forth. But we haven't got our final pricing on that. That is something that staff has approached us and they are interested in. So, yes.
Well, my concern on that, and coming from actually the folks on the ground that do the work, is that it really is going to compromise their ability to do the professional job that they were hired to do. And additionally, sort of on that theme, I've got real concerns because when we had the space discussions in general with respect to what was framed as the Sunnyvale model, you know, the Fort Bragg model became the model for the county and the co-location of environmental health and planning and building, which already exists and has been very successful. And I say that from witnessing it, being in and out of that office frequently, talking to consumers of the services in the Fort Bragg area on a pretty regular basis. Very seldom have I had complaints about the service delivery model there. In fact, it's been mostly complimentary. I'm really concerned that this move may compromise that model, and that's something that we've been building towards and really wanting to have, and it's seeming that there is some fragmentation, like I just referenced, and you're saying, yes, well, now we're going to have to add these units. I just think there's some real concerns about the appropriateness of this move to that facility, given that that's really a model program and it's functioning so very well where it is.
At this point, I'm going to defer to the departments.
Sure.
Because GSA does not, I don't have comment or feedbacks on.
Well, I just felt like I needed to come forward with those statements because that's sort of what I'm hearing and also from my own observation of touring both buildings, knowing both buildings very well. I get that point.
And as far as, yeah, programmatic issues, I'll defer to the department.
And I really do have a concern because this is a program that works very, very well, diligent and very competent staff, and questions of morale arise and also service to the community.
Stacy Crier, Health and Human Services Agency Director. The way that the Fur Street building is designed, there is a front lobby and it has two counters, and planning and building and environmental health will occupy that space and then one long hallway. So they'll still be together and they'll be able to serve the public together. From my perspective and the perspective, at least of the environmental health staff, the quality of service to the community will not be compromised. One program that is still in there is the AOD program. We had to wait to determine where they were going in the big scheme of things. That will be finalized tomorrow and we'll be moving them out before building and planning and environmental health come in. So it will open up that whole space for them. And where will they be going? They're going to be going, they're going to co-locate with mental health, which was the desire all along. You know, my staff is really excited about it. They like the space. They are comfortable with the space. They like the design. One of the things that we've talked about from the get-go is the need for an additional storage space, but they'll put the old files out there that don't need to be accessed every day. There is some room within the facility to have some files, so they'll have access to a lot. And it's not really that great of a distance. It's just really a couple of steps. So I have talked to all of the staff in Fort Bragg. I really want to take this time to really give credit to the staff. They've done a great job with all of this and really came up with some creative solutions. In this particular building, WIC is still there, and they'll be there for probably four, five, six months, and then they'll be moving away to the clinic. But right now, they're separated, so it's just a real nice design. I think the staff's done a good job, and environmental health staff is happy.
So no concerns about the actual process where they're engaging with the public space to work on things in the building? In other words, are there not any, there are no remodels that will need to occur with respect to the structural part? There are lots of small offices in there?
There's some minor remodels to the front counter. I don't have those schematics in front of me. The biggest concern really from the staff, and it was rightfully so, was that AOD was still in there. I only have two AOD staff in Fort Bragg. I couldn't move them prematurely because I can't bill until they're certified for a new location. So we're ready to move them now. I think that was really the big concern, was having AOD right there. With them moving out, it opens up the space, and there's some minor remodels to the counter. I don't think they were very significant. The one side of the counter is pretty open and big and could accommodate a nice, large table and.
But no internal working space that's needed, I meaning, you know, meaning, you know, large tables.
There's a big conference room. There's a big conference room. There's two big conference rooms.
I'm just checking.
Yeah. You know, we've worked really hard on this with all of the staff. You know, we've communicated a lot to the staff. We've worked with them. We let the staff come up with the plan design. So, you know, from my perspective, you know, moving's a challenge, whether you're moving across the hallway or across the street. You know, it's a change of environment, so it's a challenge. But they've embraced it and they're looking forward to it. I don't know if.
Would those units then outside for storage be permanent or temporary?
I think they're like Conex.
To purchase them, it's only $3,000. I mean, you can always rent them, but it's not cost-effective to do so. Not only that, but you also have some other people in the Fort Bragg area that, where we do leased storage facilities, and so this could be an opportunity on that property to maybe purchase a couple of more to accommodate other people who have, you know, storage facilities.
And I'm not familiar.
There's actually two sheds at the Avala Center. I don't know if they would be appropriate or not. We haven't gotten that.
Well, I'm not familiar with the leased storage space in Fort Bragg. So could you explain that? What programs are using that? I'm not familiar with that.
I think social services is utilizing that, and that is on the list. It's not, it's shown on the list, it's number, lease number 430 is the lease. And that's in Fort Bragg, and that's not scheduled, you'll see, to go into the GSA warehouse, obviously, because it's in Fort Bragg. So that lease continues on, and it's an annual lease of $1,500.
So that's up for discussion or consideration later?
Yes.
So my understanding, when I just heard more recently than not, on the storage units needed for First Street, that was that that was going to be temporary, that those were only going to be there while the other Health Department of Public Health programs, Division of Public Health, were still there. And then that would, once they left, it would free up, and they wouldn't need the storage units. But now you're saying that's not really true?
Well, the plan, the plan is, again, to move WIC over into the clinic. We can't do that right away because we just moved them. So you have to wait because you have to apply to the state. So there's a waiting period. And so once we can do that, we can, we've already had conversations with the community clinics there, and we can move WIC over. And then there is two public health nursing staff that are in that building, we'll probably move them over as well. It'll be about six months. At that time, staff will continue to have conversations on whether it's working for them to have the files where they are, or how they run and redesign the building. Because at that point, it will just be building and planning, environmental health, and the farm advisor. So it, you know, we'll let the staff decide if they're liking the storage the way it is, or they want to move it into the building. There would be plenty of room in the building. It just kind of depends on how they want to lay it out.
Supervisor.
We have a farm advisors' office over there?
Yes, we do.
Yes, and they're going to be moving into the First Street building as well.
What, what do they do in the coat?
Um, it's my understanding, I'm talking with.
They're, they're very limited.
Waits and measures.
Yeah, it's waits and measures, and you also have Tony Liniger, who utilizes that space every once in a great while when they want to meet somebody over there.
It's very small, supervisor. It's like, it's like a large closet.
Yeah, it's a tiny office.
The space they currently have is like a large closet.
Yeah. One of the things that, in my mind, when Kristin was talking, was HHSA has a half-empty building that we're in right now, but yet we're leasing storage space. So all of these things are really bringing everything together to be more efficient and more cost-effective. So I just think the end result's going to be really good.
Well, you know, as a general comment, if you look for our county, neighborhoods north, when you go to Humboldt County for any services, you got to go to Eureka. If you go to Sonoma County, you know, you got to go to Santa Rosa. We're the only, in the region, you know, we have inland services and coastal services. There comes a cost to that. It's nice for the, to provide the services, but, you know, it's, I'm not so sure in the long term that we can continue to do that.
Well, supervisor, waits and measures are countywide. I mean, they have a countywide function. That's, I think, why they have the office. And it used to be.
Well, I know, but, oh, my point is, our neighboring counties has one, one central facility that service the counties, where we have inland and coastal. I mean, there's a cost to that. It's great for what we're doing. It's great for the service to the people, and it's great for the departments to have their closer, to work closer to home, you might say. But it comes to the cost, and I'm not sure, sure in the future, we can continue to provide those.
All they're getting is a little tiny closet of county space.
I know, and you accumulate that up, it's a large facilities.
Well, they can always use my office then, if they need a place to land, if, if it doesn't work to continue to give them space.
Where's my office in my district?
I don't know, there's probably space for you, supervisor. Okay, any more discussion on this? Did, did you want to add anything, Stacy, on number sixteen?
Number sixteen, we're working on the move plan. We've got several staff working on the move plan, still trying to lay out the exact design. As I had mentioned before, mental health needed a little more space than we had originally perceived it to need, so we had to adjust with that. We've got a move plan almost finalized. We actually got some help from a staff in the CEO's office, Dorothy, who's really given us a lot of help while I was on vacation. She continued the meetings because I was focused on the Dora Street move. I think it'll be finalized tomorrow. We're meeting with all of the deputy directors of all the programs tomorrow. I think that staff have really stepped up. The day that the board told us to move forward with the Fort Bragg moves, Pat and I went to Fort Bragg and met with the staff, and, you know, after the very quick initial shock, they started coming up with all sorts of ideas and suggestions, and really took it well. And we should have a plan finalized tomorrow and move forward.
And what about engaging with community partners? I'm, I'm unaware of, of the specifics on that.
I've spoken with Paula Cohen. We haven't met yet. We've talked on the phone. We're going to get together, I believe it's next week, to talk about WIC. We've done that model with some other of our county partners. We have that model in Leightonville, and we'd been talking about it previously. So that's the biggest community partner. And then some of the mental health, Hospitality House, some of those partners we've been having conversations with. We're going to have our Health and Human Services Agency Advisory Board in Fort Bragg on August twenty, July twenty-fourth, August twenty-fourth, sorry, August twenty-fourth. And we've invited, or are going to invite, many community partners to really talk about all of the services that exist on the coast, and how we're cohabiting, and where everyone's at. And I believe invitations will be extended to you, Supervisor Smith, and also Supervisor Hamburg for that meeting.
Yeah, that, that meeting I am aware of, and I think that's, that's positive to rotate that meeting to the coast.
We set that agenda, and the advisory board was actually very excited about it.
Good. Okay, Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And could you update us on the status of the lease for the Affenito building?
Oh, yes. I did speak with Mr. Affenito, and we have agreed to extend the lease on a month-to-month basis until October thirty-first. So that is the, as you can see from the paper here, the goal is to have it all completed by October thirty-first.
And we had given ninety days' notice previously?
Yes.
And that originally would have fallen when?
In July. So I think within the next.
So we're stretching this out another three months?
Yeah, he's agreed to a month-to-month lease until October thirty-first.
So we could get it done well before October thirty-first, but we have that leeway if we need it?
Um, you know, probably not. I really believe it's going to take till October thirty-first, because you've got a couple of programs, and I'm, I'm aware of a lot of these issues, because we've consolidated facilities, if you'll remember. So Social Services Facility Staff is now located in GSA, and that facilities member gives me updates on all the meetings that Stacy's been having, and there is an issue with like C-4, you have to notify the state of your new location. It's got to be an approved location, and that takes a couple of months. So we're working on that right now.
But we're, July eleventh, we're moving staff out of Avala.
That'll give us some time to either remodel, maybe slowly move some people over, depending on what program they're in.
Several of our programs need certification from the state to move. You can, you can move them, but then you couldn't bill for your services, and in some cases, you can't move them at all without approval. With the C-4, which is Employment and Family Services, they actually have to approve the site, and then they come and move the wiring and the equipment, and they set it all up. So, you know, you have to give them some time to do that. We've already informed them that we'll be moving, and they're ready to work with us, but we want to give ourselves some time, because it, it may take a little while to get all of the wiring rewired. And, and with, depending on the state, of course.
So we could get to the point where instead of paying full rent for a half-empty building, we're paying full rent for a ninety percent empty building?
Well, we're on a month-to-month, so if we can get out by the end, I mean, we've set, we've actually set an internal target to get out by the end of September. If we can make that, we sure will do that. That's, that's our goal internally, which gave us a monthly way. Staff is not, they're moving pretty fast on all of this.
Okay. If there are no other questions, that does conclude my report.
Any public comment on this item? Additional public comment? Okay. Seeing none, then that concludes.
Quick comment, I just want to, I just want to thank Kirsten. You know, this is, was a major concern of the board. I know, I know Supervisor Pinches is, you know, pushed really hard for this, and I'm really glad it's getting done. It's going to save us some money. I don't know if I'm, you know, wholly enthused about what's happening in Fort Bragg, but, you know, I think in terms of the cost savings, that we really didn't have a choice.
I mean, I don't think a lot of different staff on all different moves, including my own, are real thrilled with certain aspects, but they realize the importance of saving money, so.
Yeah, moving is one of the most stressful things that human beings have to do in their lives, and I know there's a lot of stress connected with this, but the, the finances just really require it. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Supervisor.
I'll move the recommended action.
Okay, we have a motion. I don't know that we need one, but we can have one.
Well, we have it before us.
Just accept this, the report, so there's no reason to take a motion.
Pardon?
You don't really need to take a motion.
Well, that's the recommended action.
So we are accepting it? Do we need a motion?
There's a motion in a second, or, or what?
Supervisor McCowen wanted to make a motion.
It's the recommended action, Madam Chair.
No, it is just to accept, we do.
It is the recommended action. Okay, hereby.
Do you pay votes to accept reports? Yeah, we, but you don't have to, right, Council? You don't need to have a vote on it. All you do is accept the report. We get acceptance of reports from community-based groups.
Supervisor Hamburg, second it, why don't we vote on it?
Yeah, that's fine. So.
All in favor?
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimous. Okay. So let's move on.
Kind of getting unanimous, you better go for it.
You know, we're all keeping tabs, how many you get?
Five A, please. We're going to the CEO's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You should have your CEO report with you. I believe they were distributed this morning.
I don't have.
I don't have mine.
I don't have mine either.
They came out electronically.
Oh, I'll ask the clerk if you have hard copies.
Usually they put the hard copy in the mailbox. If not, we'll.
The hard copy in the mailbox, usually.
There might be one now, it wasn't earlier.
No, I know there wasn't. But they always do when they do the electronic.
Generally.
Shall I proceed, Madam Chair, or shall I wait till you have the hard copies?
No, I think we need the copies. We don't have any reference point.
And do you want to do the DOT?
We can move on and do that. So we have the Department of Transportation Director's report, it's item number six A. We do not have the Director of Transportation, but do board members want to comment? It's a pretty extensive report this time.
Well, the main, Madam Chair.
Yes.
The main thing significant is we got turned down from the, for the storm, the storm damage. That's one of March storms. We got turned down from being eligible.
Have you had any discussions with the director to give us any specifics on that?
No, it's just, we simply got turned down. I mean, and the argument was, well, there were actually three different storms, and it was over a period of time, so it's kind of like, not an exceptional deal. So anyways, we got turned down, which don't surprise me, because with all these disasters, FEMA and whatnot, they've got to start tightening up on them. And frankly, I, I agree with that, because the storms that we had in March, last March, doesn't compare with the disasters that's been happening with tornadoes and hurricanes and everything. So, you know, yeah, I mean, so for us to be in the same competition for money and reimbursement as people just had a tornado or a hurricane, it's really, I mean, I don't, I can't disagree with what was our denial. It'd be nice if we got it, but I really can't disagree with their decision.
Supervisor Brown. Thank you, Chair Smith. Yes, the Department of Transportation's report is quite a long one, and I did have some questions, and I think they need to wait. Can we ask those questions at the twelfth? Can we notify him? I mean, I don't know if it's that necessary, we go find him, but.
You want the DOT director here? Is that what you're asking?
Supervisor Brown's not saying that's necessary. Or do you think you could just contact him, or?
No, I think it needs to be public discussion.
Public discussion. Well, so you feel fine about waiting till the twelfth?
Sure.
Okay. Then we'll do that.
We'll notify him.
There is quite a bit of information here, and he goes into quite a bit of detail on the various community workshops being held, and I think that's, that's good to have that documented.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
We could do the legislative report while we wait for the CEO report, if that's okay.
Sounds fine. Okay, so we will accept the director's report, Director of Transportation's report for today, and we'll note that we would like him here for discussion for, at our next meeting. We'll go to Mr. Knopf for the legislative report from the executive office.
Chair Smith, members of the board, Kyle Knopf with the executive office. The state budget, as you may be aware, is scheduled to be voted on at about three o'clock in the Assembly and four o'clock in the Senate today. It is anticipated that this vote may end up getting rolled over into tomorrow there, so we probably won't have any information by this evening. The governor's overall proposal, or the Democrats' overall proposal adds an additional four billion in revenues to the state's projections for the next fiscal year, and basically identifies a series of trigger cuts if those revenues don't materialize by January. Probably the most important part of the proposal, and I won't go into heavy detail, is that part of the VLF cuts have been, funding has been identified to cover those reductions, so to the tune of about four-hundred-and-fifty-three million dollars. And your board may recall that, under the initial realignment proposal, the number identified by the, the governor for funding was about five-hundred-million dollars, so it comes slightly short of, of the initial target. Attached on your packet is a, a copy of the Senate analysis of AB 108, which is the overall mechanism for the VLF public safety funding mechanism, and that four-hundred-and-fifty-three million dollars. Essentially, the state has identified a switch in, between vehicle license fees and vehicle registration fees, and to move DMV funding over to vehicle registration fees, which would increase approximately twelve dollars a year per vehicle, which would free up three-hundred-million dollars in the vehicle license fee area, which would then be appropriated for realignment purposes. And there was an additional one-hundred-and-fifty-three-million-dollar identified through some adjustments to the rest of the VLF rate. So that's how the four-hundred-and-fifty-three-million-dollar figure was identified. Clearly, I, we'll have to wait and see what CSAC has to say on this issue. There are no constitutional protections provided to counties. The funding falls a little bit short of the goal set forth by Governor Brown earlier this year, but it is clear that there is funding identified to implement AB 109, which is the public safety realignment portion. So that will be moving forward. So if there are any other questions, in the, in the packet, there's a, a list of the bills going to be, that are going to be considered between today and tomorrow, as well as a, a letter dated June fifteenth from, from CSAC regarding the realignment proposal and the funding issue. So unless there are questions?
Supervisor Brown. Thank you. There, I, I talked about this morning that there was some type of language tied, and it would have had to have been the Senate version to their budget, which was being counted as revenue, and it was forty-million dollars revenue for THPs, which means it would be divided by the expected number of THPs and, and individuals submitting THPs would be paying X amount more dollars. Have you seen anything on that?
I have not, I can look it up.
Supervisor Pinches.
I'm confused on this, this first sheet to give, it says, three-hundred-million from the twelve-dollar-per-vehicle increase in DMV registration fee. You say that's in this new budget proposal?
Uh, right.
All these top lines are in the budget proposal?
Uh, yes.
And that's baked, taking, eliminating, or taking from redevelopment, one point seven billion?
Yes, the, yeah, the elimination of re, redevelopment is, is moving forward and is expected on the governor's desk, probably by tomorrow.
Okay, and they're, they're not going to go for, go forward to the second part, the selling estate buildings and?
Correct.
Well, we really don't know, because they're not going to vote till this afternoon. The last time they had a budget, the governor vetoed it, so who knows what's going to happen? But, and then a strong letter from CSAC on the, basically that's what VLF funding, they don't want to call it that anymore, but I don't know. How much waste does, how much clout does CSAC have over in Sacramento? Not much?
Well. They engaged with the Governor, and I think we all heard the Governor speak. And he does stop by their office, which is historical because no Governor did that to any organization around the Capitol. Connie Conway is former President of CSAC, and she is now leader in the Assembly, I believe. And, you know, there's a number of contacts, a number of contacts. But as with this Board, as with CSAC organization, everybody has a different opinion of what's important, which, you know, should be kept in, which come out. So it's all up, you know, decision-making.
And maybe this for another discussion, but I kind of get the... Watching this from afar, I kind of get the opinion that our state legislatures view CSAC as just another lobbying group. And really, CSAC is the main voice of the 58 counties.
Correct.
And I think they should be taken a little more seriously or listened to a little more. But I get the, kind of from what I've viewed over the last few years, that CSAC is just kind of looked at as just another lobbying group.
No, actually, they come to them for a lot of advice. They do.
Actually, Supervisor, I had... I happened to run into Connie Conway yesterday in Sacramento. And so we actually had a chat because she and I were in some trainings together on retirement. And, you know, and I thanked her for her support, which has been continuous on local government. And she said, yes, it's very surprising that... She mentioned that 12 on the... And I'm sure she was referencing the Assembly side. 12 on the Assembly side. She goes, 12 of them on the floor there were county supervisors. And she was also saying, in essence, yeah, I don't get it, that the body's sort of lack of perspective overall, in general, regarding local government. And the interests and needs of local government seems to be quickly forgotten by people that are there. So that was sort of an interesting sort of comment. But, Mr. Knopf, I wanted to go back to what you said on the constitutional protections, I think you referenced. And also in Sacramento yesterday, I spoke with someone who's a lobbyist. And that was a big... That is, I guess, a really big red flag in terms of... Everything's all patched together, but maybe you could go into a little bit about what that might mean. And there's real concerns in the governing community in Sacramento about what that might mean.
Well, there are general concerns that those funds... That these funds that we're discussing here today and that the legislature will be voting on over the next two days could theoretically be borrowed from or, you know, outright stolen. And the constitutional protections provide protections against the state coming in and borrowing during their fiscal crises, which has occurred fairly often in the past between state and local relations. You know, the other aspect to it is that, you know, the best that the Governor put forward in the realignment proposal was really a five-year financing plan for realignment. And the idea was that after five years, the economy would have theoretically recovered and revenues would be able to match the costs for the realigned services. And what this proposal here today is, it falls far short of even a five-year plan, which was originally considered inadequate. So this is really... It's not clear that this would even last a full year, full fiscal year. But it is certainly better than the prospect that was being considered, you know, last week, so...
But there are real concerns in Sacramento about that, and we're going to be hearing more about it.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, other questions? Any public comment on this issue? Supervisor Hamburg, is that your pen up?
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Why don't you give your perspective on how do you think CSAC as an organization does at the Capitol?
Well, I think that... I think there is some back and forth, but I think the point you made that this... The Governor has engaged differently with CSAC this time than in years past. That's a plus. But I think that it's... I mean, I think CSAC is very challenged to... Because they're coming in as an advocacy group, and it's not probably the priority of most of them in Sacramento to help us do our budget balancing strategies. And I think that was Connie's comment is, in essence, was that... But that, in fact, I think she even said something along the lines of, that's what we're here, you know, that's what we're really here to do. We, you know, local government is a huge arm or an extension or a portion of state activity. Often with our Health and Human Services, it truly is an arm of the state. So, but I don't think that that is no... That is embraced to the degree it should be in Sacramento. So, I mean, I think that CSAC does a great job in trying to promote it, but it's very difficult to get that buy-in, I think, from the electeds. So I think that's the challenge. How do you get more buy-in? That they have a responsibility towards local government. I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. Okay, thank you, Mr. Knopf. So we'll go on to the CEO's report?
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. And also, it's my understanding that Howard Dashill is... Oh, I guess that is in the building. Tim, is that correct, or was that an error? Okay. Oh, so he is. Okay, so he... Howard was listening to the meeting, so he'll be here before the end of the meeting.
I couldn't wait until...
Well, that's Howard, so... Okay. I'd like to go to my CEO report now, and one comment about CSAC. You know, this year through a series of events, we had some issues with our Indian Gaming funding. And while the representatives were very helpful, it was actually CSAC that gave us the most assistance with Indian Gaming. So I think there are a lot of benefits that we get from CSAC that we just don't see every day. But at that point in time, it was critical. We needed assistance with our Indian Gaming funding, and it was really CSAC that gave us the most help. So I just wanted to mention that since the subject of CSAC came up. Regarding my CEO report, I think this is the fourth one this month. And so there's a... Rather than being repetitive, it's a rather short report today. The VLF funding, I think that might be... This might be outdated already. So we're... It's still a wait-and-see. I think we've already talked about the county's long-term debt. What's new here is a phone conference that we had on June 23rd. Again, it's the same group. It's the Executive Office, the Auditor Controller, Treasurer-Tax Collector, our representatives, our financial advisors from KNN. And part of the phone conference really had to do with a follow-up regarding our trans borrowing in our Standard and Poor meeting that we had in San Francisco on June 17th. And there were some questions around cash flow. So we had our phone conference. The county's rating for short-term trans issuance is still uncertain, and we're still awaiting the decision from Standard and Poor. We were hoping to have that decision today. However, we're still working with KNN, and they are still assisting us with revising our information that's going to Standard and Poor. So this has been a process since June 17th. Again, I think one of the key issues is how we look on paper, how our general fund looks on paper. And that, again, is the change in the accounting methodology that's related to TETER that is in the fiscal year 9, 10 Galena Audit. And that change significantly raises the county's general fund negative balance. I talked about this last week. So this is something that we're still working through. So I think that's really just the update for today. I had hoped by today to be able to report to the Board regarding our rating for trans, but as of now, we don't have that information. And I believe a lot of it is that we are still resubmitting information to Standard and Poor. Again, the trans borrowing, we're still hopeful that we'll be able to do that. It's really more the long-term borrowing that really is at risk. We were thinking of refinancing our certificates of participation, providing that the interest rate was low enough, and that may or may not be what happened. So as soon as I know, I'll report to the Board. I think the rest of the CEO report is pretty much what you received last week. June 29th through July 8th is our summer recess now. The Water Agency workshop was scheduled for July 12th. Based on, I believe it was last week's meeting, and we had talked with Howard Dashill regarding the dams and then also wanting more input from the community regarding our water agency. I would say that the water agency follow-up will either be on July 12th or the following week, if it's okay with this Board to postpone it one more week. Additionally, we pulled the water agency fees until this workshop was over. So part of that workshop, we could talk about the fees as well and determine if this Board wants us to bring forward with additional fees or not. And then the final date, September 13th through the 15th, is our final budget hearings. And I think there was a... There was an email that came forward this morning from Fort Bragg. And another handout that you have is the May 13th, 2011 notice that went to the cities, the Notice of Intent to Reinstate Local Booking Fee Charges. And we have the list of where the notices went. We have not received, other than the city of Fort Bragg, we haven't heard from any other city or special district that they were unaware that we were looking at reinstating local booking fees. So we'll follow up with the city of Fort Bragg. I don't know what happened. The notice was sent. We checked... We followed up with Willetts. They received their notice. We're checking with Ukiah. So I'm not quite certain what happened with Fort Bragg. And then my last piece of information I'd like to report out on is that I was asked to speak at the Coastal Realtors last week. They had asked me last year and then this year again. And there were about 60 Realtors in the room. It actually was a really good turnout. And it was a very interesting meeting and talking with the Realtors as far as what they see, what their industry is experiencing right now. One of the questions that came up actually was about the buildings in Fort Bragg and what were we doing with the services and what were we doing with the buildings. So I did share with them that the county's tentative plan about the moves to First Street and Avila and the Affenito Building. And being that they deal with planning and permitting a lot with their clients, they actually thought that the move to First Street made a lot of sense to them, and they were really supportive and didn't verbalize any concerns about the one-stop permitting in Fort Bragg and whether that model would be... Whether there would be an interruption in that model. So I was really pleased to hear that. Additionally, I asked them about the possibility, if the county had decided instead to sell Fur and to sell the Avila Center, what was their perspective as Realtors on the coast as to the possibility of actually selling our buildings? They felt that buildings of that size, whether it was the Franklin Street or the Fur or the Avila Center, that at this point in time, they don't see any buildings of that size moving on the coast. So it was an interesting meeting. I was glad to be invited to speak, and I hope they invite me back next year. So with that, I think that's the end of my report, unless there are questions.
Supervisor Brown?
Oh.
Okay. Any public comment?
Saying none?
We'll move forward. Mr. Dashill, you're here, so why don't we go forward with your report? Supervisor Brown had questions for you?
Yes, and I could have waited till the 12th, but happy to see you, Howard.
Okay.
I wondered about... There's going to be, let's see... Phaleys Creek Fish Barrier Removal Project. And there's going to be on July 14th in Hopland, 515. And you talked about the workshop here, and I really appreciated the fact that you went into quite a bit of detail. So I think all the Board members being curious about that because we are facing fines if we don't do what we said we're going to do. And I did appreciate it, and I don't know if Supervisor Hamburg's going to attend. You are. And is that the Veterans Hall's right up on the hill behind the Schoolhouse Plaza?
Behind Bruticose, yeah. Just behind the Bruticose parking lot.
Okay. I'm sure that's what you meant. Then the other is, it was on page two, and you went through some extensions, second access information, both coastal and inland. But it said, "Following the presentation of the County Board of Supervisors, it will be appropriate for the Board to deliberate and then assign relative priorities to the three aforementioned second access..." I'm sorry, my glasses. I got the wrong ones. I can't read. "Second access projects." So we have had Brook Trails and... Reddymire Road on the books for a long time, and I thought they were priorities. And we have Sherwood, we talked about last week. And now I'd like to know a little more how long the Mitchell Creek area's second connection's been hanging around.
Well, Supervisor, through the chair, again, Howard Dashill, Director, County Transportation. Actually, the Mitchell Creek Second Access has also been every, you know, August during budget time, I give the Board the top 50 projects and revise it every year because a few projects get done, believe it or not. And those projects have all shown up on there, and I rarely get any comment from the Board. So I thought I'd throw my fishing line in the water. I'll give Bob Parker actually credit for pinning most of this. This is an excerpt of a next steps paper that he produced for the public meeting. But yes, DOT, it's helpful for us to get an idea of what the Board thinks because now we have three projects with no funding. You know, the Brook Trails project has some funding for PE, which we're, as you know, we're moving forward with. But Reddymire and Mitchell Creek won't have any funding for the PE phase yet, you know? So it's... I guess I'll get some input today, so that'll be good. Because you're asking.
Well, I was just curious how long Mitchell Creek... Because I try to keep these reports and know... I know that there was funding to finish Simpson that was taken from one-time funding for railroad crossings, I believe, inland. And I just think it's important that, yes, we have these discussions. And I guess that would be one. And number two is, if you're going to change our priority lists... Because I see this as a change. Mitchell Creek's the first time I've seen this, and maybe it's been here before.
It's been on the list the last three years.
Okay.
Yep, it's there. You'll find it. However, you know, I welcome this opportunity. Let me just... You know, I'm a fairly frank person. I'll cut to the chase. There's probably very little possibility that a federal or state funding source is going to want to come in and fix what they determined to be a mistake that was made during the planning and development process. In other words, we've allowed three areas to be developed for residential without a second access, with only one access. So the county's let that happen. And I brought it up before, and it might be kind of a controversial thing. But in the case of Brook Trails, you have a community service district that actually has contributed some real dollars towards the Brook Trails project. And I'm not so sure going forward that we're not going to have to maybe look for some grants, but maybe also consider benefit assessments for these areas and some way to get a specific incremental, you know, voter-approved property tax to build things. That's really the larger conversation I'd like to have. And then I would say the areas that really want these second accesses will, you know, come up with the money, or you'll have the voter support there for it. That's one thing I've got to throw out there because I don't see anything else funding it. Now, new development is the way we always try to do that. And we'll try... We can try to... The other hope by identifying these plans is to have a project identified and a rough cost estimate of what it'll be. And in the case of Reddymire and Brook Trails, well, in Reddymire, we have a rough estimate. Brook Trails, hopefully, when we finish the process we're in right now, will have a preferred alternative and a cost. And at Mitchell Creek, I'm hoping to have that. And then sometimes you can get developers to fund the new improvement as mitigation. So that's the other reason we want to have these reports on the shelf. But it is time to start talking about where would we put our energy next. My... What I'll submit to you and get your feedback on is that we'll probably put our energy to the project that has some funding, and that'll probably be the first one that goes. But I'll listen to what you have to say.
Supervisor McCowan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I'm aware that Mitchell Creek Second Access has been an issue for probably a couple of decades, if not longer. It's been long identified that there's problems there because, once again, the county has allowed... allowed development to proliferate without providing for adequate access. So we have created our own problem, just like we did with Reddymire and Brook Trails. But that aside, there's no question in my mind that Brook Trails is the priority second access project. And so it's, you know, if you wanted to go fishing, you did use the right bait because I really don't understand why we would be saying that the board needs to have a discussion and assign priorities because, given the length of time that the planning has been going forward, the number of studies prepared, again, there's no question that Brook Trails Second Access should be first in line. And I think, to me, clearly the Reddymire Second Access would be second in line. Although you make the point, it may be doubtful that there'll be state or federal funding for any of these, which to me just would reemphasize that we shouldn't be changing the priority ranking. You know, I don't really even know why that would be a discussion point personally. But so anyway, if you wanted to fish that out, you got it.
I appreciate it. These are the kinds of conversations that I note and keep. I'll probably even ask for a copy of this tape. Because I might be playing it a few years from now.
Here's one more thing that I think is a factor also. The second access for Mitchell Creek, unless you were to punch out to Highway 20, which I think would probably be prohibitively expensive, but unless you were to take the second access to Highway 20, you're not going to do anything for regional congestion. But the Brook Trails project and the Reddymire project, in addition to providing the second access, will also help address regional congestion problems, which I think is kind of double-bang for the buck.
Good point.
Supervisor Pinches.
Well, when it comes to transportation dollars, with all the changes that I've just seen since I've been involved since 19, the different pots of money and what you can use for and what you can't use for. We're not really about a priority project list anymore. It comes down to, we're at a, what we call a project of opportunity. You know, if Howard's got a list of 27, 28 projects, like bridge funding, all of a sudden there's money, so that all of a sudden you do that project. It really has not much to do with what your total priorities are. It has to do what pot of money will fit to do that project. And that's why Howard's gotta keep a, you know, if you can keep these studies and whatnot up, and if the money comes along. But in particularly, everybody uses the Brook Trails as an example. Since I've been involved in the Brook Trails Second Access since 1995, it's always been envisioned that that would be a benefit assessment to fund that. The problem when you go to a benefit assessment, before you go to the vote of the people, you have to have benefit assessment hearings. And when you actually have those public hearings, the people up there have, you have to post on the wall and show every parcel in that area that's gonna pay or vote for the benefit assessment on. They have to know exactly what they're gonna pay. So in order to do that, you have to do what we're doing right now. You have to do the studies, and you have to get the project costs and everything. Because you can't say, "Well, vote for this project because we don't know if it's gonna cost 30 million or 60 million." Doesn't that work that way in a benefit assessment? You have to know, the people have to know and have the opportunity what they're voting for. Then if they have those public meetings, and if 50% of those people at the meeting say we don't know a part of it, that's the end of it. There's no more meetings, that's it. But you have to have the exact amount. So we're moving that process. I'm not so sure benefit assessment would even pass in Brook Trails, but it's probably got a chance. As far as Reddymire Road or any other project, I don't think that those areas are consolidated enough, enough people in tax base to even go forward with a benefit assessment. And so you're just talking about, what if you don't have local funding and maybe some sort of grant or something, which is pretty remote at this time. But, you know, there's a process. But we're really in an era of, it's not, you don't save up your money to do a project, you look for a pot of money, and you have a project that's ready. So it's a project of opportunity, not necessarily your top project to do. And hopefully, you know, but I really feel good in the last few years, we have, like North State Street, we actually are, Howard said, we are actually turning out some projects. But it's not an easy step. And of course, you know, through MCOT, you know, there hasn't been much money coming through in the STIP funding either. And hopefully that will change because it looks like no part of the legislature or the governor's office wants to basically try to road transportation funding. And to me, that's a good thing. So I think maybe some things will start rolling to get some different STIP money for projects.
Thank you, Supervisor. And I think you're absolutely right with respect to the projects of opportunity. And Mr. DeShiel, you can't report to us yet on the Simpson Lane because we don't, the final numbers, it's not gone to construction. But it's looking like we're going to spend a way small portion than we had even predicted we would have to spend, maybe half of what we even thought. And so...
Less than half, and I have reported that. It'll be 80,000 at the most, and the contingency estimate's 150. And I think I've said between 80 and 150, and that's in a past report.
You have, right.
I might add too, just to defend the priorities list, the top 10 projects, and particularly the top five, really are projects that drive the process of what we push for. And, you know, the board has supported me on this for the last six years. The Phaleys Creek Bridge has been on number one, and it has been problem after problem, environmental after environmental. The board supported me when I asked for the 1B allocations. That money sits there because it was blackbirds this last year. But that is a bridge that was structurally deficient, I wanna say for the public's benefit, not an unsafe bridge, a bridge that people can still safely drive over. But it's one of those things that needs to be done. The traffic safety review is in that top five. It's the number two priority. So really, when you get past the top five or 10, then we start getting into things that are fluid, like Supervisor Pinches said, where opportunity causes the department to go to them. But I continually push for those very important, particularly a structure that needs replaced. I'll have staff dog after that, whether there's funding opportunity or not. There's just some things you have to get done, you have to work on. So it's not entirely opportunity-driven.
Well, with respect to the Simpson Lane though, the money that, I mean, that was really a partnership. Caltrans picked up more than 50% of the total. They did all the engineering, design, permitting, and then 50% of the cost. So I bet they probably are sharing in 75% of it overall, just a rough estimate off the top of my head. But Supervisor Brown, the monies that got reprogrammed, there was a pretty good, and Phil Dow addressed this, pretty good estimate that possibly Mendocino County would lose that money that was set aside because the CTC was in no way going to be able to go ahead. They were not gonna allocate or permit railroad crossing dollars to be spent in this environment. And he said he didn't foresee that changing for many, many years to come, if ever. So he originally, his thinking, of course, it goes to the MCOT board, but his thinking was, it was really for the intersection projects in Ukiah was his first priority. So only some of the money that MCOT allocated was spent, the rest is still there. And I think that maybe Supervisor Pinches will remember, I think some of that's even being, to a small degree, replenished. But the intersection projects in Ukiah just were not ready. So that's why he recommended, spend a portion of that money set aside, and it had to be in concert with something that interfaced with a federal highway project. So he made the recommendation that we spent that money. So it kinda came all together because of those reasons. So it wasn't like a coastal project going forward ahead, it's just all those things coalesced at once. And he still has his eye on the Ukiah projects for the next allocation.
When it says Mitchell Creek, Hair Creek, now would that be by Hair Creek Nursery? Is it?
No.
No.
No, no. It's Hair Creek, it's a lower section, but, and to Supervisor McCowen's points, I remember this as an issue before I even got on the board. And it's very much like the Brook Trails one, is that originally started as a safety exit. It was the original idea. Then it had to do with flow of traffic and volume, that it went ahead into something more than just a safety alternative exit point, but an actual second access. So it sort of evolved like the Brook Trails one. So I think we need to get benefit assessment, just concepts probably before the board, just so we have a better understanding. Talk about that because it's very possible in this environment that none of these projects would go forward without them.
And that was my next question to you. What do you think about a benefit assessment within that particular area? Do you think it would be a popular thing or not?
Well, I doubt it would be popular. But would it be desirable from the standpoint of getting it done? I think that would depend on how much agreement there was amongst those residents on the preferred alternative, and were they really behind it? So I think there's a lot of things. But I think Supervisor Pinches has, you know, certainly looked at this before, and that's why I think we need to have the bigger discussion, just to educate ourselves, not with any specific project in mind, have the general discussion. Because if it isn't, if there isn't the critical mass of property owners, it may not, it may fall short of what you would need, and perhaps Brook Trails is the only one that really rises to that occasion. I don't know. But I think we need to look at it so we have a better sense. But if that's a mechanism to advance projects, and it's the only one we see, then we really, I think we should be having that discussion. Supervisor McCowen.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I think Supervisor Pinches adequately summarized the benefit assessment project and probably the prospects for it. But with, and I agree, a lot of times it's gonna be kind of targets of opportunity as to what funding you can pull down. But given that the three projects we're discussing are all second access, can you imagine a source of funding that could be used to fund one but not the others?
Well, I, you know, and I'll go ahead and say, because again, we're having a frank discussion, this, probably the Reddymire Second Access has the best chance of finding a separate source of funding because it would become a critical alternative route to 101, which is obviously a major, you know, road, you know, a primary road. And like I've said, you know, not that it would happen, but imagine a tanker turning over on the overpass of 101 and North State Street. You literally, in that scenario, some kind of hazardous waste tanker, whatever, you literally have cut off north-south travel. I mean, think about it. It's like the Confusion Hill slide. You're going around to I-5 or over to 1. So that will, that'll, you know, be a positive thing. Now, you'll see this Mitchell Creek Second Access, you know, in the next, by this fall, it'll be before the board. And the public actually came up with this Hair Creek, you know, Supervisor Smith, that's what I'm talking about, idea that we added. And that would, and that's why they're doing it, although it's really expensive. You know, but those will be, you know, there are certain funding sources that might, you know, that might mean something to them because they have an interest in the highway system and an alternative for all that traffic. So as you said, Supervisor McCowen, it becomes a regional, you know, detour opportunity. And that, you know, that has quite a bit of validity.
Thank you.
Supervisor Pinches.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. You know, people, this board and people in transportation need to remember that in the last, since 1995, the last 15 years, we have committed pretty much all of our STIP money to the Willis Bypass. Over 30 million dollars, that's on average, $2 million a year. What if Howard had an extra $2 million a year, I mean, three years, he could save up and do a $6 million project? We've committed, that was our county money coming to us under the STIP, that we've committed, you know, to the Willis Bypass. We don't have that project completed yet. It's all basically, we were real close, and we had one staff person sign the permit, so it's delayed this another year. Hopefully, we're gonna get, start construction this spring. But that is a, you know, the Willis Bypass was voted the most sought-after project in all Northern California years ago. It's ironic that Mendocino County committed all its STIP to get it done, while Humboldt County never put, not $1 of their STIP toward it, they put it to improve their road to go over 36 to go over to I-5. But yet, it's just as important to Humboldt County as Mendocino County, really. But we've put a major local commitment to that project that's not done yet. So hopefully, when the STIP money, you know, future STIP money, we'll be able to commit to other local projects. But that was a major commitment for Mendocino County. Undoubtedly, without Mendocino's major commitment to that, we wouldn't have a design project and a project ready to go. But I'm just saying, that's, Mendocino County really stood up big time to get that project. And hopefully, we're gonna start the project next spring. But think about that. I don't know of any other local entity that would commit that kind of money, a small county, to one single project. But, so it certainly probably penalizes us from doing other projects, although in the long term, I think we're all gonna benefit from it. But that's a major local commitment, and so we don't have STIP money to do other smaller projects. But hopefully, that's behind us now.
Thank you.
Just to go on record too, just real quick, not only is Reddymire, though, that, just for the public record, if anyone watches this on TV, is something we're looking at. It's the other reason why the department's pursuing funding to study the Orchard Street Extension, because that would also fix the problem of a bottleneck at North State 101 if something happened at the interchange, a fire, a spill. So, you know, there again, and that, the Orchard Street Extension is much less expensive because there's no major structure involved. We're crossing the river on the Reddymire one, and not so. So that, we have lots of plans to try to fix that.
Supervisor Pinches.
One quick, what's going on with the Calpella Bridge?
That'll be a seismic retrofit, and we finally got...
I see they've been out there doing the...
Federal authorization. The other thing you've seen at Calpella, and you'll see that next month, on the same day, the 12th, you'll see the report, the RDA paid for, and the Air District for a enhancement in Calpella. And that's maybe what you've seen us doing out there. But we do have the bridge under seismic retrofit.
It's just a retrofit on it. Because I know it's like a bad bridge, it's just a retrofit, huh?
Yeah, it's got some scour problems too. And the same thing at Schoolway, and Eureka Hills moving away out forward too, but it's a little more controversial. But those are the last three seismic projects that we're working on.
Thank you very much for...
You bet.
...traveling across town to see us.
Sure.
Thank you.
Coffee break.
Is anyone aware of any other business we have not concluded?
Mm-mm.
Does the clerk have anything?
Good job, Chair.
Okay. So we are now adjourned till July 12th, 9:00 a.m.